Call to order, the Town of Superior Board of Trustees Work Session for June 8th, 2015. Tonight we have some committee interviews.
Yes, thanks Mayor. So we've scheduled four interviews for tonight's work session for applications we received for various advisory committees. We interviewed two applicants last meeting, and we have an additional five applicants in addition to these that we'll interview on the 22nd and hopefully have appointments to follow on the regular agenda for the 22nd. Four of those five we'll interview on the 22nd. The fifth one is former trustee Scumaz, so I didn't feel like we needed to interview her, but we can schedule that if you'd like as well. With that Fiona Boger is here, and if you don't mind coming up to the podium and introducing yourself.
Hi, I'm Fiona Boger. I'm interviewing for the Open Space Advisory Committee.
Great, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Maybe you can start just by telling us a little bit about yourself and what prompted your interest in OSAC?
Sure.
And then we'll take turns asking a few questions and go from there.
I'm an attorney. I work in downtown Denver. I do corporate law with private M&amp;A transactions. And I've lived in Colorado now for four years. I moved here for law school at CU from Los Angeles, and I grew up in Boston. And what brought me to Colorado is that I love the outdoors. I hated living in Los Angeles, to be honest, because it's such a crowded congested city. And having moved to Colorado, I am overwhelmed with how many different activities there are. I mean, I had a whole wish list when I moved here of all the different outdoors activities that I wanted to try to master, and I've pretty much, wouldn't say I've mastered them, but I've checked a lot of them off of my list for at least trying. And like I said, I work in downtown Denver, but I chose to live out here for the past two years because I love the Town of Superior and I love the open space. There's nothing more relaxing than being able to come home from a day in the office, a really busy day, and being able to go for a run on the trails or walk my dog or go mountain biking or anything like that that the city has to offer. And I live, my apartment complex is right along the creek, so I can just go out and go along the creek, trap the trails all the way out to the open spaces out there. And I just love it, and I want to be able to make sure that it stays that way and help educate people and have them experience how great it can be to have open space here so that it remains a part of the city.
Great, thank you.
How did you hear about the opening?
I actually went on the website. I went on the website and searched. I was talking to my boyfriend about how much I loved it, and I was like, man, you know, I hope that they don't do anything that limits the open space in the future. And he's like, well, you should get involved then and try to make sure that they don't do that. I was like, oh, good idea. So I went on the website and emailed Martin, and great, there happened to be an opening.
So congratulations on finishing law school.
Thank you.
Better than that, finding a job.
Yeah.
Is your job fairly, are your hours fairly regular?
Yeah.
And the reason I ask is because I believe OSAC meets in the evenings. I forget which.
6:30.
6:30.
Second Wednesday.
So would that be a problem, you getting to those meetings?
That would not. I, one of the reasons I decided to work where I work is that I'm pretty much out of the office every day by 6 o'clock, which is unheard of, a lawyer. But yeah, I have a very flexible schedule fortunately, so that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay. We have some questions that if other people are in the audience paying attention, they'll probably hear again. And I'll ask one of them, and that is, what would be yours, I think I know based upon what you said, but what would be, what specific priorities would you have in your work on the committee if you were appointed to it?
I think that there are several areas of the open space that can be maintained. I don't want to say a little bit better, but maintained in a way that will encourage more people to use them. And I think it's very important to have different events that can show people the benefits of the open space. And so I guess having, A, having more events that drop people to the open space so that they can learn that it's there, learn about different ways to use it, and then also just making sure that areas are maintained in a way that attract people and drop people and give them a purpose and ability to use the open space.
Okay. Let's, well.
We just had National Trails Day yesterday. Did you hear of it?
I did not hear of it, actually. I was actually out of town, but I did not hear of it either.
Yeah, because the reason I keep asking questions is I'm not sure how successful we are in getting through to apartment dwellers. So, yeah, but it was held at one of the big trail heads.
Yeah, I get all the Chamber of Commerce notice says that are sent around, but I didn't hear anything about that.
Great. Okay, any questions for us?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Any possible conflicts of interest? That's one thing we ask all of our applicants for all the different committees is if you might have some kind of possible conflict of interest with work or anything that might be a conflict with observing.
You haven't done any heavy investing in property around here, though?
No, I wish, but no. I have thought.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Lindsay Boyle. She has applied for Parks Recreation Open Space Trails Advisory Committee.
I decided to not cooperate there. Hi guys, I'm Lindsay Boyle. I've been a resident of Superior for about two and a half years and lived in Colorado for 16 years in August. So I came out to go to the University of Colorado and never left like so many people do. Sorry about that if you're a longtime Colorado resident. I work at Medtronic just across the highway here in Lewisville. It's a very long commute to work. It takes me about five minutes. In fact, we chose to live in Superior in part because of that. My husband works in Boulder and I work just in Lewisville, so we've been over here for a couple of years. And I have applied to be on this committee because I'm very passionate not only about open space and trails, but also about our pools. I was an operations manager at a water park in California for about six years, and I love the aquatic management piece of my career history. I look back on it fondly, and I think that that's something that I could bring to this particular committee that maybe would set me apart from other candidates.
Sounds great. Questions from the board?
I'll key in on that. It certainly does, actually. And so tell us about your experience with our pools and what would you do?
Well, I actually have three little kids. My husband and I live just over off Eldorado and Holyoke, and so we frequent both the north and the south pools. I swim laps at the north pool at lunch from, while I'm working, while I'm supposed to be working. I'm training for a triathlon right now, so I'm spending a lot of time at the north pool especially. And I would say from a cleanliness perspective, we have some work to do as a town. I am obviously staring at the bottom of the pool quite often, so I think we have our work cut out for us there. From a lifeguarding perspective, I think we can make some improvements there as well. I mean, having managed a group of young kids, I mean, I was part of a 10 supervisor team, I think it was, and we managed about 75 lifeguards between the 10 of us. And I think we can get more from our young people than we're getting right now. I think we have some opportunities for improvement there as well. But our facilities are fantastic. I mean, I'm really excited about what we've been able to accomplish from that perspective, but I think, like I said, we can make some iterative improvements there to really get the most out of our teenage employees and also just our facilities in general.
Okay.
So did you happen to be training yesterday right before, doing laps right before the rainstorm?
I was training in the rainstorm, yes.
I believe we were sharing a lap.
Oh, it was you, Joe.
Thought you were.
I looked different without goggles, I'm sure.
Yeah, you humbled me.
Please don't hold that against me.
So, obviously it sounds like you're getting two meetings would not be a problem for Medtronic.
Well, it's a stretch to commute that far, but I think I can handle it.
So I'll ask you another question that people should pay attention to that didn't ask. But what do you think are the main issues facing Superior right now?
So I would say, in the context of this committee or just in general?
Yeah, I think it'd be most relevant to steer it towards this committee.
Okay. I think we have a lot of opportunities to expand our use of open space. I mean, there's tons of unsanctioned trails that we have that are over on the other side of Colton that I've run on sort of unintentionally, and I think we could maybe leverage a lot of that space to create some trails that would allow us to use that in a legal fashion that might prevent erosion and that sort of thing. So I think we could, that's a big issue that's facing our town right now. I mean, those trails are not sustainable and they're super muddy and gross all the time. So we might be able to make some improvements there. As far as the rest of the parks and things, I mean, we are extremely blessed to live here. I mean, our parks are awesome, and we're obviously using them a ton because we have little kids. So I would be happy to help maintain those and make improvements to them as necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I love your passion.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for cross.
Any potential conflicts of interest that you might have?
Other than that I work in Lewisville, no. There's no.
They don't need to.
They're part of the.
A little bit, but.
Don't hold it against me.
Okay. Thanks for your interest, appreciate it.
Next we have George Cuffner, who has also applied for the ProStac Committee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you guys? I'm George Cuffner. I'm a lifetime resident of Town of Superior. I was born and raised in this town for 31 years. For the ProStac Committee, I'd like to sit here. I have two kids that are coming and growing up in this town. I really, really am passionate about our community. I'm passionate about this town. I remember when Coal Creek Drive, there was two stop signs and everything was dirt roads. I've seen this town come a long ways, from the baseball fields over there by Superior and Colton to our sport complex that's coming across the street that I hope we get pretty soon. And I'm really excited. I hope I can sit on the board with ProStac and see, point, help steer the town in the right direction for our parks and open space and our committee. I also have a lot of inner structure with the company that I work for, as well as my father's company, Superior Maintenance, and we do a little bit of work with the parks. But on that end, I'm transferring to going into the oil business. So hopefully, and within the next year or so, I'll be doing some rouseabouting here in Boulder County area, in Superior, building stairwells and cases and stuff like that in Superior to start another business for Halliburton and the rest of the company too, other companies as well. But like I said, I've been born and raised here. I'm a diehard Superior kid. Looking at buying a lot here in Old Town Superior from my aunt and building a house here. You know, I mean, this is home to me. I wake up every morning and mountains is what I see, and it's a nice community. It's a nice area where I live. I put a lot of hard work in the public works department, as you well know, Mr. Folsom. You caught first hand of that.
Absolutely. Well, thanks for your interest.
No problem.
Questions for the board?
And why did you choose ProStac versus some of the other openings?
ProStac for the, I have open space, parks and rec. I like seeing the trees. I like seeing the green grass. I like seeing the pretty flowers and pretty trees because of where this town sits. It's gorgeous compared to Lewisville, Broomfield, Brighton. Superior's really got it way down. And over here off of Colton with our trailhead, there's minimum touch and go. I mean, my family raises cattle here, so we have a lot of cattle on Boulder County open space too as well. So we ride the horses down the trails, and I can see it could be leveled out, a little bit of work here and there, but just touch it, nothing too drastic with concrete sidewalks or anything like that, you know? I also see, know what it would cost to lay down material, to put material down. I can help ProStac out and say, this is what you're going to pay per tonnage if you, for a project of this, say for instance, if we want to redo the trail right here on the side of the hill. We need crushed breeze, we need 55 ton of crushed breeze. This is the price, this is what we can do it for, this is what it should cost us as a town, as a committee. This is what it costs the town, the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. That's very good. So are there any major amenities lacking in our parks?
In our parks, I believe not. No, everything's up to par. Grass looks beautiful as always, you know? We've been getting a lot of rain, getting a lot of water coming down the hills, and I just hope that we don't have another flood like we did in 2013. But if we do, we're ready to rock and roll. We're prepared, you know? The baseball fields look gorgeous for little kids. We have Cuffner Field up there, which is named after my family. Gorgeous, gorgeous field, beautiful field. And I just can't wait till my kids play on that within the next two years. So pretty excited about that.
Great. We appreciate your interest in the committee. Any potentials for conflict of interest?
Conflict of interest, like I said, my father owns Superior Maintenance. He does a little bit of contract work for the Town of Superior. If needed to be, and I was on the board, they had asked my opinion, I would have to step away, and I couldn't vote on it. I feel for my best interest as a taxpayer that I say, hey, I can't vote on this, but I can give you much help as I can and tell you ballpark what it should cost and what it shouldn't cost, what a project would cost and what it wouldn't cost.
Right.
You know, give you a lot of insight about it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Our last interview is Howard Fisher, who has been an applicant for OSAC.
All right, Howard Fisher, good evening. And I'm from Boulder. Grew up in Boulder. My parents taught at the University of Colorado. Had been here for five years. So basically what, I live right behind the open space 3594 here on Peak Avenue. So my first move here, wasn't a whole lot of people using those trails, but it's really increased and they're really taking a beating. I'm concerned about a couple of things from there is, one is level three, exactly what they own and what they're going to be doing with it, the possibility of fracking on that open space. I know that sounds far fetched. 2013, the floods really wiped out a lot of those trails. They're getting wider, so they need some kind of trail maintenance out there. And I like Superior. I use a lot of the Colton trailheads out there, and then behind my house, biking, hiking. And I also want to be a little critical. I don't like all the green space, all the bluegrass, particularly along McCaslin Boulevard. And I read in the overall planning report that even when these new townhomes are done, plant on planting grass along there. I think that's a waste of water, so I'll be critical about some of the park areas that are planted with Kentucky bluegrass.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
Well, I like people with opinions, so your opinions are welcome with me. I'm going to let somebody else talk. You've addressed a bunch of my things.
Do you have any problems with getting two meetings? One, was it one night a week, one time a month, is it?
6:30 every.
No, I work, I work from my home. I have a couple of businesses, so.
So you've spoken about what I think would be your priorities and your specific issues already, so we haven't asked you the one last canned question. And that is, where do you see Superior five to 10 years from now?
Well, I read some of the master plans, and I noticed, of course, that open space area up above, you know, by 128, it's sort of says it's an opportunity area. A little concerned about that one, if they're going to build office buildings up there, so that would really not be good. I'd definitely fight against that. And I know Superior's growing. I was glad to see that Superior's not going to grow west of McCaslin. So I'd like to just keep it basically like it is, improve on the quality, some of the dogs that run free and owners who don't clean up after their dogs on those trails. So no one patrols those trails, so I know you can patrol those trails, but there is some community effort to do something about the trails, some trail building exercises. I've done some of those in the mountains and stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
Okay. We appreciate your interest in applying for the position. Any potentials for conflict of interest that you can think of?
No, not associated with any government, so.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, and to all applicants, thank you, and we'll be in touch soon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is update from the Arts Working Group.
Yes, thanks Mayor. A public art working group was established this year in an effort to respond to RTD's request for citizen representatives of the US 36th Quarter Communities to recommend art along the corridor and to examine public art options within the Town of Superior. In March, six applicants were selected to be part of the group. Since that time, two group members have resigned, leaving four active members. They're here tonight, thank you, to share some of their ideas and thoughts with the board and receive feedback. With that.
Great. Well, thank you all for coming and appreciate the time that you've spent on this.
I am. I'm Linda Tan. I've been in Superior for eight years, and I've decided to join the Public Arts Committee because it's obviously a very exciting time in Superior's growth. I'm part of the committee with Susan, Darryl, and Marcia. And as Superior is taking some giant steps forward to kind of make a bigger mark on the map, to help us establish ourselves as a viable and exciting city, we thought during the construction, the new development, that this is an optimal opportunity to involve the community in bringing arts to Superior. Our concept is kind of using the tunnel as the, the concept of the gateway to Boulder. We kind of are the gateway to Boulder, we're part of Boulder County, we're kind of the stepchild right now, kind of the southern tip. And so with the, with the tunnel and the new development, we thought if we had something in the tunnel, kind of a, oh, that was cool, or that was kind of, you know, a mini wow. So it puts just a little pin in someone's memory as they're going on that tunnel. Oh, you know, that was part of, where was that? Oh, that was Superior. Just a little mark to make us, you know, to put us on the map. We have just started the process of looking at some different pieces. We've visited Boulder's tunnels. Thanks to Google, we have visited globally. I've seen some very exciting things, you know, budget blowers, but also some small time things. And Darryl's going to give you a presentation. But with the concept of the gateway to Superior, we really thought if the community got involved, maybe participated in creating the art, or, you know, we could do anything. We could just be something fun, as I mentioned, you know, so people were, oh, there's the coolest ideas that you'll see. But, or we brought the community in and we made it part of, a cohesive part of the whole community. So, you know, it's kind of pie in the sky, and we're really excited about it, obviously. And this is just the tip of the iceberg, so we've just started. But hopefully during the presentation, they'll have some questions and we may have some answers.
I didn't know I was doing this. I thought I was just making them, but Darryl McCool. One of the ideas that we came up with, since it's such a wonderful windy city, was this idea of a kinetic sculpture. And that tunnel is 190 feet or something like that. So we thought the idea of movement through there, and our initial idea was, should I keep moving? Okay. You know, I've probably been on the train in DIA, and that amazing kinetic sculpture, when the train gets moving and the, these things get moving around, kind of prompted this idea of, just a start of an idea, because we've seen a lot of tunnels and underpasses that have paint or mosaics and different things in them that get worn over time. And this was just an idea of something that would not necessarily have graffiti issues or problems with wearing it, wear and tear over time. So this was a kinetic sculpture that I found that I thought was just amazing. It's just these little tiny pieces and just, it shows a small amount of movement. And I think in your packet, you can go and look, click on the links later and actually see the sculpture in motion, which is pretty cool. And these are wind sculptures outside of a Utah Transit Authority, which I thought were very cool. And there's a whole slew of them that are just amazing. And this is obviously not in a tunnel, but it's just giving you ideas of what, what could be.
There's some of those over in Interlochen, too.
There might, there might be this, this sculpture, this artist and the one that does the John King, this one, are local folks, so, which is another, you know, nice idea if we could actually find somebody that was local to. I think that's, that's the end of my tour.
What was unique about these?
If you, do you mind coming up, come up to the microphone?
Oh, I didn't. Oh.
Yes.
I was.
It's all being recorded.
Or the two people that aren't here, it's just.
Yeah, you're on.
No, it was just, it was just my opinion about those. I mean, so as part of the concept I mentioned before is the conversation pieces. You know, we visited the other tunnels in Boulder, and a lot of them, this is kind of the issue, we want to involve the community, but a lot of the underpasses that had the community do it, yeah, like Darryl mentioned, they're not, they don't look good. You know, they're kind of flake off, and it's going to take some maintenance, and we don't want that, you know, expense in the long run. And, you know, a lot of them weren't really worthy of stopping to say, oh, my God, that was really cool. So this, these ideas are completely unique, and, you know, as Darryl mentioned, I think if, and not that we're set on this, but it was just an example that this is pretty kind of graffiti proof, you know? It's kind of one of the fears of, of a tunnel, especially a long tunnel that can be dark. So, you know, that was kind of the, the concept. And, you know, in Boulder, they're trying to kind of incorporate kind of the nature, like, well, one of them had like the, the groundhogs, what are those? The peri-dogs. Right. The peri-dogs were kind of carved in, and that was, you know, kind of cute because they were trying to, you know, say, this is kind of what we're all about. Well, what's Superior all about, right? So we're, we're still trying to kind of define that. And we have a great, you know, opportunity to kind of say, you know what we are, we're cool, and we're forward thinking, and we want you to stay, and we want you to think we're cool. So I thought that's why these were important. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Hi, I'm Marcia. Just if you would allow me, there were a couple of points, there we go, in previous meetings. I don't understand the budgeting situation thoroughly, of course, even minimally, but, but it is possible to buy a standalone sculpture for $10,000 or less. But it's not the only option that's art related and could draw the community together also. An art exhibit displaying works by local artists is an idea that's been floated around the committee, enhancing the local pools with public art on the, on the actual facades of the facilities, collect and display local, I'm just reading what you can read there. I should. I should, I should apologize for that. But those are ideas that have been floated also as a way of getting the community, community started, looking around and being involved in the exterior. Even a concert by some nonprofit group like the Boulder Concert Band has been suggested to draw the whole community together for a free concert in the park kind of thing. So, we're, we're expanding the idea beyond just a single, you know, totem kind of, you know, subject to everybody's criticism artistic piece, and open to all suggestions, put it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
One, I am so delighted you have formed. I hope you exist for the next millennia, because I happen to think that this is what makes a sense of place, is the unique features of this kind of thing. I love the idea of the kinetic sculpture. I'm not sure how far wind infiltrates into 190-foot underpass, but I, I was...
I was here at Wintown.
I was really intrigued by the tree idea, but not in stainless or whatever that was in, because it's going to be against the concrete. I actually saw those little leaves in various colorful shades like autumn, and I thought, wow, with all that moving around, that could really be impressive. So, good work to start with, and please keep it up. I hope we're going to replace the other two. Are those in our lists of, of open spaces on our committees?
Replace what?
We had six, we're down to four. Are we going to replace the other two spaces?
Oh, you know, it's not a formal committee right now, so, I mean, if the board, so, I don't think we have a limited number, I mean, so...
I like the idea of starting it as a working group until it gets its bearings a little bit, and, but I...
I mean, if there's individuals that are interested, they can attend the, the working group meetings and participate.
I would, I would actually advertise it in those things we put out every month about openings. To me, it's, it makes no difference if it's a committee or a working group, you know, if they're interested, community members. While it's, these things are graffiti-proof, they're not vandalism-proof. As a matter of fact, I see the little floating leaves as possibly just attractive to vandals, but I don't think that needs to be our first concern, you know? I don't think you can ever prevent that kind of stuff. I think doing something really, so that takes your breath away is, is the goal. So, good work so far, keep it up.
And like Trustee Pennington, I love your out-of-the-box thinking with the kinetic art, that's beautiful. I never expected for you guys to come up with something like that, so that's great. And I fully support it. We do have to look at the budget, so, obviously, but I like the creativity.
So, one of the ideas, too, with the kinetic possibly is a buy-in from the community, you know, how people buy a brick or a tile. So, you could buy whatever, a leaf, or whatever it is, and then that way you get community involvement, you have a lot more funds that are coming in, and so that's just one of the ideas that we also have.
190 feet, they might have to buy a tree.
$100 a leaf, I like it. Put your name on it, too.
Okay. Are there examples of other communities that have used those kinetic sculptures in tunnels as opposed to other walls? Well, maybe the DIA tunnel, but it's a little bit different because it's got a vehicle running through it, and it's, you can't...
Right, the train causes a lot of that, right, the DIA, right?
You can, you can go through it, but you can't touch it. There's no way to touch it.
Yeah, and we can research that, if, if that's a way that you want us to go, absolutely look into that more. I was just coming up with ideas that were creative, that were interesting to see. But, yeah, we can look and see if tunnels have problems.
I like the, like the others have said, I like the idea of it. I'm, I'm just questioning how it would function in, in a tunnel that has lots of potential hands and things on it.
I mean, it's a 190-foot tunnel with mostly bikes. I mean, there will be pedestrians going through, but bikers probably aren't going to stop and get off and pluck their leaves, but who knows?
That would, that would, the bikes causing enough like motion and going fast, and go fast enough like...
Well, you'd be surprised how much wind would probably go through there.
Our concerns are just broadly called teenagers.
Yeah. I could see, though, where you'd have some of those, especially with the fans or something, the, or the kinetic one with the, the little arrows moving, that you actually could put something over that so that you couldn't get into it, like a wire, you know, part of the art design of it, so you don't touch it, because, I shouldn't even say all the things that come to mind that kids could do to that, you know, things that they could apply to those worldly gigs and stuff like that, that would probably not, I'm not even going to give them the idea. But I like the idea of that, that's movable, and I always loved those little bird things over in Interlochen, I used to drive by them every day to my office, those ones that you had from Utah. So, I love those kind of things. So, and the other question that you asked, which I think we should try and define for current, is what do we want Superior to be about when it comes to art? I, I know it'll be changing, but right now, what, what is it that we're trying to impress? Because I agree with you, we don't want to show prairie dogs or pioneers or coal mines. We've done that, and that's very good. It's important to know where we came from, but this should be more, where are we going? And so, if you could work on defining, where is Superior going? Not where did we come from, but where are we going? And that should kind of help drive some of the artwork. Exhibits of local artists, that's always a good thing. Boulder does it, Downtown Boulder, Louisville does it, they're just changing their artwork out now, I saw when I was there a couple of days ago. And I also love the idea of, of a concert in a park as an art, as art. I think that's what I heard you say. I love that idea. Art is not just a sculpture. I love that, that you brought that out. And then, our current art that we have sprinkled throughout, like the marketplace and, and through some of the parks and things like that, I'm not suggesting we move. I love the little person riding her bike, you know, and I love, on Purple Park, and I love that people put mittens and scarves on her in the wintertime, so she doesn't look cold, you know, when she's riding her bike in the blizzards. So, those are kind of interactive things, if we could encourage that more. How could we encourage where people actually see the art? Like, like I said, you know, I don't know if you've ever seen the, I'm sure you have, the Purple Park girl with her scarf and mittens.
Lisa showed us how the city of Thornton has this interactive web map. So, when people go onto Town of Superior and they're looking for bike trails or, you know, maps, you can say, look at Superior's art, and we have actually pictures of all the art, and I have written up descriptions, like a couple-sentence description of who did it and what it is, and so on the map, you can, you know exactly where it is. So, this, I don't know if people would visit it, but this at least encourages people to, you know, pay attention and see the name of the art. So, this is, is all kind of part of this cohesive thing. Now, the city of Thornton did a theme, they put out like a call to artists for, and they did, you know, animals. We have too many varying pieces already to even try to start to do that. But another reason why the kinetic was a cool idea is because it's wind, you know, and we do have the windmills nearby, and it's kind of a progressive thought, so. Anyway, so we're trying to kind of pull all those pieces that you're talking about together on this interactive web map.
Yeah, that, that's great. And then I know Prostag has talked about even the, and I know we got the little roadmap to, to own a Superior that we just got here. So, that's good. And then I think that we've talked about in past Prostag and Open Space Committee meetings about actually having kind of wayposts or, or mileposts, mile markers that kind of say, you know, here, at, at, at the daisies, let's say, in the marketplace, you could say 2.8 miles to Davidson Mesa, or whatever, you know? So, you could say, use those artworks as a milepost or a mile marker, that's a great idea, too. And my last comment is that, don't forget to think about art for the Superior Town Center, because the roundabouts, we're going to have two of them now, you know, and then...
Town Square.
And Town Square, and Boulder Valley Ice has the ability, we need, have the ability to put art around or to actually draw people up to the Boulder Valley Ice Building.
Well, you give us enough money, we'll put art everywhere.
Well, there's art already included. I mean, you should find out what the budget is, but we have art as part of the public improvements and part of the budget already, that, that's part of the cost of building over there, you have to put so much money available for art. So, think of these, you've been very creative, I love the ideas that you come up with. So, think about that, too, how the people, like, I know Luke has said before about Boulder Valley Ice, he, he's thinking about art, you know, to define his space, and, you know, instead of the traditional hockey player or something on the side of the wall, we want something that's pretty cool. And again, it's back to, what is Superior? What, where, where is Superior? Where are we going in the future?
Can you say that again? So, you're saying that the owner of the ice rink is already forward-thinking about that? So...
He is, because we told him to be.
Oh, that's great.
We told him he asked for art.
I'm not sure he thinks that that on the building is art as much as his sort of personal motif, you know, for Boulder Valley Ice at that point, but I love the idea, absolutely. The, the ideas are in motion right now, literally, and so as Town Center takes shape, it can certainly be the focal point. I am, I read all the time about that Renaissance in Lafayette and the importance of art in that Renaissance, and I think it's just an excellent idea, and if they can do it, we certainly can do it.
Yeah, it's Lafayette, it's Ice at Louisville, but it is Lafayette where they have that art. That's really good, yeah. Excellent, thank you for your...
Just a couple of comments. I, like everybody else, appreciate your enthusiasm and thinking outside the box, and let's not put down any of these ideas yet as not-good ideas. Keep thinking, I particularly like the kinetics. I hope that you all are looking forward to working with RTD as well, because that's going to have a budget, and that's going to provide some money that we can use, I believe, that, so, that is really important. Lots of good ideas spoken tonight, and I'm sure you guys have, will come up with some more, and I hope, I think you can sense the board's going to have some support for you, so.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in, appreciate the update.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Okay, next on our agenda is item number four, review of tentative June 22nd agenda items.
Yes, thanks. I'll make this fine. So, for the 22nd, we have the acceptance of the committee notes, Town Center update, we have committee reappointments and appointments of new members to committees. And then, I was thinking, since it looks like just interviews for the work session, maybe if we, based on tonight, I think we might have time to do an executive session prior to the meeting, if everyone's open to that, just to talk about the letter we received, and then some development-related items. And it shouldn't take more than 40 minutes, I wouldn't imagine.
So, 5:30?
No, no, we start at 6:00, yeah. Interviews should take us 20 minutes, and then we'd have the remainder of the time to do that.
Okay. Or should we do it, or should we flip it and do the executive session then?
I would prefer to get the interviews over first, if you're okay with that, and then...
Sure, okay.
On this committee reappointment, committee member reappointment structure, the way the rewrite, I understood it was going to work, is we were, one, the people could, the members could self-determine whether or not they wanted to be considered for reappointment. But I thought we were actually going to give the chairman an opportunity to comment on the members of their committee who asked for reappointment, you know?
On recommending whether to reappoint or not.
And if there were persistent problems with attendance or anything like that.
I'd have to check with my staff to see if that's true, but...
So, I don't necessarily...
We can have that information for you.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily critical in the next round, but I don't want to lose that check and balance that was built into that system.
And, so, there's certain members, current members that are eligible, and certain that are ineligible. We ask the ones that are eligible if they want to be reappointed, and they let us know one way or the other. And if they do want to be reappointed, then we bring those to the board, but it doesn't say anything in there that you have to be appointed. And we'll, and we have, we're going to have 11 applicants.
For how many spots?
I think there's two on ARCAC and one on Prostag and one on OSAC and one on historic commission, I believe.
That's exactly how the system's supposed to work. We want a queue of potential applicants.
And the ballots that you receive for the 22nd will have your names on them because of that interpretation of the law, and so, we'll go for that.
Okay.
That's what I have right now. Some items might pop up on the radio agenda that I don't have scheduled right now, but that's what I have right now.
Okay, very good.
Oh, wait, just one question came to mind. It's, so, you have a Town Center update, but will you also have a Boulder Valley Ice update?
Yeah, I think Taylor will be here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, we'll adjourn the work session, be back at 7 o'clock.
Very good.
Excellent. This is first time.[390.03]
Call to order, the Town of Superior Board of Trustees meeting for June 8th, 2015. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Clint Folsom.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem David Williams, Trustees Joe Sorelli.
Here.
Rita Duzell.
Here.
Leah Degores.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Sandy Pennington.
Here.
Town Manager Matt Hagley.
Here.
Town Attorney Kendra Carberry.
Here.
Town Book Book Sergeant.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And we have one correction, item number seven A, the date should be 2015 and not 2013. Yeah. Any other, any other items?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Concerned on agenda?
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda by Trustee Gura, second by Trustee Sorelli. All those in favor? Passes you, Ninos. Right next is reports, questions, and issues. Trustee Pennington.
Went to the Chamber Dinner. Several of us were there, and I have to say, I think it was the best yet. It was held at a venue in Lewisville, which certainly cries out for a similar venue in Superior. And I'll let Heather report that three residents who are very active in our advisory committees were recognized for their service. But all together, just really a great event. Went to Deb's First Fridays, spoke with a couple residents there. Nothing really comes to mind as a distinctive concern. Mayor National Trails Day, hosted by OSEC, was at Colton Trailhead yesterday morning. I thought we had a good crowd for 9:00 AM on a Sunday. This is the second year we've done that, and they, you know, probably report on the teen participation. At National Trails Day, I spoke with Allison of our Parks and Rec staff. She had just held the tree climbing class the previous week and said it was a huge hit. So if anybody had children who did that, I'd be interested in hearing, but I thought it was a clever idea and obviously well received. And then I think I joined the whole staff in wishing Lisa Ritchie well. We will definitely miss her. She's been a great contributor, I think.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Sandy's comments about Lisa. I was stunned when we got the email from you that she's leaving to greener pastures. I understand, good for her career, but she's going to be missed a lot. She's been a great asset to the Town of Superior, done great, great work. And I'm not going to be here in the next meeting, I'm in California. Actually recording the audio version of the book, so.
Oh, right.
Goodness, so. So I'll be gone that whole week. Met with a youth last Wednesday, and one thing that's coming up starting this week is the community park storytime at 10:00 AM on Wednesday. I would highly encourage as many trustees as you can to volunteer at least once this summer to participate in the reading. I believe you're, you've signed up already for, which date, do you know the date?
Believe in September 1. I had to change the dates, so I'll have to confirm that, but I am on the calendar.
Yeah, I signed up for July 8th. We had another great meeting. So they're going to have some things to present to the board, some potential recommendation. One of them is, starting next year, which literally actually means in August, so we're going to change from the calendar year from January to December, given that they're their school year, so we're going to start from August to August, basically. So the, there'll be a revised work plan timeline to reflect that. That's one thing. They're also going to come and ask us about changing the attendance policy. We really want whoever signs up to really be invested and passionate and to serve in their capacity, so. Although this isn't set in stone, and they're going to present it in front of everybody here, they're thinking that if, if you miss two back-to-back months, without an excuse, without a doctor's note, that you're basically going to be most likely asked to leave. Or if you miss four total out of the whole year, and that's basically like 40%, so whichever comes first. And they really want to, because there's some kids that signed up initially and they've never come back. But the ones that do come, they're very committed, and they're there, you know, every month. And also, we wanted to talk about the term limits, if you will, rather than doing it one-year term, to do two-year terms when they're elected. You know, just food for thought for you guys. Obviously, if somebody comes in as a senior, they're only going to have one year left, but it provides more continuity that way. And in terms of bringing in new members in August, so they asked, well, how do the appointments really go with other communities? And I said, well, we interview them, just like we did here today in the work session. So they wanted to know if it's possible for them to interview them also, and just food for thought. I know that doesn't really happen, I know that makes it kind of complicated. Or can they, can they at least be in the room to see how the interview process takes place?
Yeah, they can definitely be in the room, for sure.
Okay. And it's kind of strange, I have 15 kids interviewing others, 50 one by one, but I want them to see what the process looks like.
That's probably a better way to do it.
Okay. So, okay.
And they could even help submit some questions or something.
Or if they can ask, maybe ask some questions or.
Submit some questions, maybe.
They're taking more and more ownership, which is great to see, and Laurie's doing a great job.
That's great.
Although we had one mishap, I don't, I don't know if you saw, if anybody has seen the tape.
Uh-uh.
So usually, somebody signs up to bring food, you know, some, you know, sweets or something, some muffins or whatever, and somebody brings the drinks. Well, one of the girls brought the drinks from her refrigerator, just taking out, you know, water and juice and this and that, pulls out a beer. See, it was a can. I'm like, whoa. Just thinking, oh, there is drinking here in this group, so everybody's wet the hydra and, so, anyway, it's kind of a funny thing, but great meeting, though. Kids are doing great.
Great, thank you. Is that all your updates? Okay.
Very short report. I had a conflict for the Chamber Dinner, so I didn't go unfortunately, because it's one of my favorite events. But I had two meetings, two events with the, the regular meeting of the Stewardship Council for Rocky Flats last Monday, where they had their annual audit report, which was about as exciting as our annual audit report, and DOE's annual report for 2014, which took them that long to get, deliver that report at this point in 2015. And the biggest discussion item, I'd say, had to do with the cap on the sanitary landfill. It's, it's a non-RICRA, a non-resource conservation and some Recovery Act cap, so it's just an earth and cap. It's on a point in land where it's an unstable, it's, that landfill is in an unstable spot, so the cap itself is tending to, to move, and DOE's having to do a lot of maintenance on it. And some of the communities are concerned about it, and they're just going to have to continue doing maintenance, and with the location of that, it's gonna, it's gonna be a difficult problem to resolve. Something they should have thought about 70 years ago when they built, put the landfill there. Anyway, secondly, along with the mayor, we took Rocky Flats tour on Tuesday, I think it was, was it Wednesday, one of the two. And we got to see that landfill cap and the issues there, and understand why it's a problem. But it was a, it was a great tour. Amazes me that, how beautifully that, you know, it's, looks going to be deceptive, but how beautifully that area is getting reclaimed, and that's part of the remedy, is to reclaim it with grasses and so forth. And it was, I thought, extremely interesting tour, and perhaps the mayor will add to that, but that's all I have to report.
Can I ask you questions on that?
Sure.
What's in that sanitary landfill?
It's a sanitary landfill, so it's just.
I mean, is it worn gowns and everything?
It's, would not have been.
Or is it typical sanitary?
Typical sanitary, and any worn gowns, they have very specific ways of disposing of that stuff.
They said it was mostly construction debris and cafeteria waste and office waste, that sort of thing.
Okay. And then the second thing is, did any final report ever come out in terms of impact of the 2013 floods?
I don't believe that's finally done. I, I'm trying to remember how they, you know, they, they update on surface and groundwater constantly, and one thing, so I guess in part of the 2014 annual report, anything from that would have shown up in, in the water reporting. What was of interest, and they don't have the, all of the rain we're having this spring is causing them to collect much more water, groundwater than they usually collect, so they're, they've been out there, their groundwater collecting system is automatic, and they're, they've been out there quite a bit collecting groundwater because of the, of the rain, and they, the results of that collection process still, is still coming on that. So I don't think there was anything I recall of note from the floods, but, you know.
Well, just quickly, I.
But all those reports are on their site.
I had heard the flood overpowered the system, and that a subsequent report was going to be issued, but I've never seen a subsequent report.
That may be the case. That's it.
Okay. Trustee Dozal.
Now, is there concrete over the Infinity Room area? Is there concrete over some portion of the DOE land, or some other kind of a hard surface?
There's, there's two landfills. There's a present landfill that has a, I don't know if it's a RICRA cap or, which is much more involved. And there's the original landfill, which they stopped using, I think in the 70s or maybe, but that was, that was the san, that, that did not have a RICRA cap.
Okay.
So, but things like Infinity Room and stuff like that, that, any waste from there was sent someplace else.
Right.
And anything that, if any of that was left on site, it's, as a minimum, more than three feet below ground, probably more than six feet below ground, because where they imploded buildings like that, the basements were way down, and that's where that would have been, so.
Okay. I attended a Dr. Cog meeting on May 20th, and most of the discussion there was about things that are associated with other counties, like Arapua County trying to get more urban development area, they wanted one square mile added to their urban planning area, which it was really a conversation between Centennial and, and Arapua County, it was a very interesting discussion about who wanted to maintain the urban planning area. I guess we don't have any problem with that here, but it was kind of interesting to me. And then there was a lot of discussion about the Sustainable Communities, and we'd had that presentation a couple of months ago, and some cities were concerned about the fact that because the Dr. Cog group was going to accept the Sustainable Communities report, that meant that they would have to, they, these communities, would have to do something with it. But again, as we heard, it was just a recommendation of how to build around transportation centers and bus rapid transit centers and things like that, and train light rail, so that got through. And then, of course, Bike to Work Day is Wednesday, June 24th, and I think maybe the mayor or someone, I see signs around, and, and they made a big deal about that because they're heavily involved in that. The Bike to Work Day is Wednesday, June 24th. Attended also the Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner, was excellent, first time I've ever attended. I intend to, I hope to be able to attend many more, was very good. National Trails Day yesterday, went to that, and that was fun, and it was sunny, and it was great. And I also did a visit to the street work that's starting out there last week, so that was interesting, too, to see all the activity that's going on there. Thank you.
Okay. For my updates, I, on the 3rd of June, went to the Rocky Flats tour with Trustee Sorelli, visited the central operable unit, and that's the area in the center where the buildings were, and that's maintained in perpetuity and closed off in perpetuity by Department of Energy. It was interesting, they said it was not necessarily a danger to be in there, it's more that it's closed because they want to maintain the monitoring equipment and the remediation equipment that they've got ongoing in there. They've, they've actually got a number of personnel there, in and out of there every single day, working on all of that equipment. We visited one of their solar-powered water cleaning systems, which was interesting to see that in action, and said that most of the cleaning that they're doing there of this water is not plutonium-related, but it's rather these machining fluids that they use in the machining process, and they, in the 1950s, the correct disposal method was to dump them in a trench, and that's what's all leaching into the water on an ongoing basis, and so that's what they're, they're treating with this water treatment system. So that was interesting tidbit to learn. On the 4th, I went to the Metro, or, I'm sorry, the Mayor's and Commissioners' meeting. There was a discussion there about the administrative support for Mayor's and Commissioners Coalition. That group has had, City of Lewisville's kind of provided administrative staff support for that group for the last 10 years. Group's grown in membership, we've recently added Erie and Jefferson County, Adams County, so the group's grown a little bit, and the workload has grown a little bit. And I think the Assistant Town Manager for Lewisville's kind of ready for a break, and so there's some discussion about what, you know, who, who does that for that group, because this, the Mayor's and Commissioners Coalition is, don't have a bylaws, don't have a chair person, there's just a very, you know, there's not a lot of structure to the group, and it's worked well in, in the past. So there's some discussion about who should provide that administrative support, and so the options are, you know, rotated around among the different jurisdictions, but the disadvantage there is that it, it doesn't provide the continuity that you need on an ongoing basis. The other option that seems to be the most popular is engaging some type of outside contractor, and when we say contractor, someone that could, you know, we could contract to. US 36 Commuting, or 36 Commuting Solutions is one group that has an administration in place and could perhaps be that support staff for that group. So there will be a cost associated with that, and I'll be coming back at some point with a, you know, a number that we'll need to step up with. It's probably going to be in the $1,000 a year range for municipalities, so we're not talking a huge amount of money, but definitely one of the more valuable groups that we participate in. Also went to the Chamber Awards Dinner, and hats off to the Chamber for a great event. I've been to a couple of those, and it was definitely the highest-attended event so far, and very well-run. Yesterday, I ran a, my first-ever cleanup project at Superior Elementary School, had over 40 people show up. I, I didn't know if it would be myself and maybe my son to show up, but we had over 40 people show up. And really, I really appreciate Trustee Hanson connecting me with the Scouts and, and the Marauders Rugby Team who provided all of the help, and we couldn't have done anything without all of that great help. So we, we worked for three hours and cleaned four rock beds in front of Superior Elementary, and everybody had a great time. It was, it was a great event, and I think we made a little bit of a difference, and it's great to see all the kids and adults out there doing that, so it went very well. Wanted to say thanks to Lisa Ritchie, and I will miss her very much. I especially enjoy working with her when I was on the Planning Commission, worked with her very closely, and just a tremendously quality individual, and town, definitely miss her, and Wheat Ridge is, is going to benefit from, from her. I wanted to congratulate our colleague, Dr. Degores, for his, publication of his book, which I look forward to reading, and congratulations for, for.
Thank you.
Getting that published, that was a great accomplishment. The Boulder Boulder was a couple of weeks ago, and myself and Trustee Sorelli participated, and this is a race of over 50,000 runners that participate in the Boulder Boulder, and so it's quite an accomplishment if you can win any portion of that race. Now, Trustee Sorelli informed me that he came in 18th in his age group, and I came in.
It's a war of attrition.
My, my position was over 30,000, so no, no, no awards there. In the Town of Superior, in the 2015 Boulder Boulder race, we had one Superior resident that won their age group, and she's here tonight, Taya Roberts, won the girls' eight-year-old division with a time of 55 minutes and 45 seconds.
Wow.
She was, which I learned today on the Boulder Boulder website, was exactly the 8,000th finisher, so you were in exactly 8,000th place, so congratulations, and that was 22,398 positions ahead of myself. So we wanted to, we'd like to recognize great accomplishments here in the town, and so I wanted to recognize Taya and invite you to come up and have a picture with the board.
Did you wear those cool shoes when you ran?
That's right.
Come on, yeah, come on around this way. Yeah, just come on up. Right, right.
We stand over.
You can sit, you can sit right here.
You can be in charge.
Yeah, you can sit right there. Okay, come on in.
All right, if everybody will squish in, we'll get this on. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, one more, I've got one more.
I'm proud of you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, my last announcement, follow-up on Trustee Degores's comment about the Community Storytime, I'll be doing that on July 22nd.
Okay, very good.
Look forward to, look forward to Community Storytime. All right, do we have any Town Manager announcements?
Yeah, thank, thank you. We had scheduled for C.Doc Commissioner Heather Berry to have her Bagels with Berry meeting here at Town Hall this Thursday, June 11th, at 7:30. She had to go out of town that day, so that's been canceled, so. We, they asked if there was another date that worked here, but the room's booked, so we're seeing if we can find another date to have it here. I'll let you know if that happens. Let's see, you have a couple of things from the Parks Department that they've done that I wanted to just highlight. One was a publication from Bike Life Magazine that highlights our trails in town, which I thought was great. And then the second one was the promotion, The Passport Superior, which I think is another great publication that they've been working on, so. Those, that one, The Passport Superior, will be available to residents and bikers and whoever uses the trails if they, if they'd like to have it, so. The last thing I have is just a question for the board. Next Monday, we have our dinner with the Boulder County Commissioners, and I have one item that Trustee Duzell has given me, it's a possible agenda item, and that's fire services in the county, and just wanted to see if you have any other items that you would like me to notify them, we'd like to discuss.
I do, I'd like to prompt them to bring in someone from Housing and Human Services to kind of give us an update on what the county's doing in that regards for town residents.
Okay.
I'd had that covered. Mayor Pro Tem Williams and I went on a tour at the Aspen Wall Housing Project in Lafayette in January, and we spoke with Frank Alexander about doing that, and just wanted to follow-up and make sure that happens.
Okay.
And I think the open space, too, you know, a report in the Boulder County open space and trails, I don't know that I have any issues, I just wanted to know, because we heard one candidate for open space and trails talk about the trails going into Boulder, you know, into Boulder County open space may not be, you know, maybe tiering in some sense, so maybe we just have a discussion about that.
Well, along those lines, that, that new underpass that comes out onto Marshall is in the county, and Lewisville wants some connectivity.
Crossing there, yeah, yeah.
So that might be another topic, and, because I think Lewisville's looking to us to do that, but it's, it's not ours, it's the county's, and.
Right.
Part of the land is, you know, then it connects through Lewisville's water plant, but that's, you know, we should definitely make sure that's on their, the county's radar screen.
Okay.
And frankly, we don't want them to cross over there, we want them to come down through the town center and then back through Coal Creek and into those trails. I mean, you can get to all those trails that they talked about, Lewisville talked about, by coming back on the, down our trail and underneath and around and through town center.
But a lot of people are going to the west, though.
Yeah, but that's, again, it's not our issue. We want it to come through our town center.
Both ways.
It's our issue, if emergency crews have to scrape them off the roads. I agree, it's a topic, yeah.
But we're not bringing up because we want that overpass or underpass or whatever, over Marshall, it's because it's an issue that's been brought to our attention and is Boulder County issue.
Okay, thank you. And then Phillips is in contact with their staff, and they'll let us know if they have any items, and I'll let you know what those are.
Okay. Doctor.
Thanks. I did attend the Metro Mayor's Conference last Wednesday morning in Lakewood, and it was a very interesting presentation on the construction defect issue that I think you're all aware of, and the proposed legislation in 2013, and 2014, and in 2015 that all failed. And there were probably 20 or 25 of my colleagues there from many other municipalities, it was a good discussion. Unfortunately, what we all kind of agreed upon is that statutory municipalities are pretty limited in the options, if, again, this all assumes or presumes perhaps if you want to take any action on this, if you don't, it doesn't matter, but we, I'll be preparing a memo for you, this, for you on this issue, I just wanted to give you a kind of a summary of what we discussed. And most likely, the only option for the town as a statutory municipality would be some sort of a plat note. And that plat note would be voluntary on the part of the developer, so the developer would come in, add the plat note, Town Board would approve the plat with the note on it. That plat note would require the HOA that's being created to follow certain procedures before commencing litigation, construction defect litigation, be limited to construction defect litigation, including mandatory arbitration. Now, one of the interesting questions that came up during this presentation is that Douglas County has already done this, and so the question was, well, has it worked? You know, have you had condos, you know, developers banging down the door now? And the answer's no. So they think that it'll get there, but it's not going to be overnight. The issue is that construction defect litigation is making it very difficult to build owner-occupied multifamily housing. Single-family housing is okay, apartments are okay, so it's not just all multifamily housing, it's just owner-occupied, so condos, basically. So that's why there have been very few condo projects in the metro area in the past several years now, and that's why you see so many apartment buildings, you know, and instead of, what you would look at as a development you would think would be condos is all apartments these days, because obviously people who rent can't commence construction defect litigation. So that's, that's really where we're going. So my thought is to prepare a memo to you with your options, which may just be one. Home-level municipalities have more options, honestly, they could pass ordinance. They could pass ordinances or other things. And then, obviously, it's up to the board whether to pursue that option at all, but I just wanted to throw it out there that that's what happened last week. It was a very good presentation, it was a good discussion. We are supposed to have an update at the CML conference in a couple of weeks, because some of the communities are just passing ordinances right now. Parker passed an ordinance, Lone Tree passed an ordinance, Littleton, Lakewood. But in the meantime, I talked to Aurora City Attorney, theirs is going through, so some of them, a lot more of them will have gone through by the time we have the CML conference on June 18th. The attorney's portion of the conference is June 18th. So, I will get an update then, but in the meantime, I'll go ahead and prepare the memo with really what I presume to be our only option, and then the board can discuss at some point whether or not to pursue that option.
Okay, thank you. Tom Park? Okay. I'll go through a couple of upcoming events. We've got Purple Park Cleanup Saturday, this coming Saturday, June 13th. Community Park Reading, which we've talked about, is Wednesday, June 24th. I think that's the start of it, and it continues through the summer on Wednesdays. And of course, the July 4th pancake breakfast and parade. Any other events that I'm missing there, upcoming events?
What time is the cleanup again, at Purple Park?
Eight to 12.
Okay.
This Saturday. Okay, we'll go on to public comment. Any public comment? Okay, no public comment. Presentations, Chamber of Commerce update.
Good evening. Heather Kraykraft with the Superior Chamber of Commerce, and thank you very much for those of you that were able to attend, and we did miss the other two gentlemen at the table that were not able to join us. But I have the pleasure of working with our 210 members and hosting our annual Dinner and Awards that we did take to a new venue this year, because we had seated 170 people, which would not fit in our small-town spaces here. So, we did have that decision, unfortunately, that we had to move out of town, but it was a fantastic event. We continue to hear good things, so I appreciate your feedback as well. One of the exciting parts of our evening is to award, as I have shared with you many times before, our six community awards, which we are very proud to share this responsibility, really with the membership and with the members of the community. So, for those, I wanted to make sure that you got to hear it, and anyone else that is listening to this meeting. The Independent Business of the Year, which is presented by the Daily Camera, was awarded to 36 Community Solutions, that many of you are well-versed with, they're a great organization. The Large Business of the Year, presented by Summit Bank &amp; Trust, was awarded to Eldorado Natural Spring Water, our wonderful providers of many of the bottles of water we have at our community events, as well as many business owners have in their place of business. Our Service Group of the Year, presented by Chick-fil-A at Flatiron, was awarded to Coal Creek Meals on Wheels, another great organization that I know we try to partner with from the town's perspective as much as possible. Our Educator of the Year was, which, excuse me, was presented by Stafford Team Real Estate, was a teacher chosen this year from Superior Elementary School, Ms. Tracy Huffman. It was very exciting. Many of her friends from the school kind of snuck in the back of the building to make sure they got to witness her being awarded this award, and she had no idea it was her name being read. So, it was very exciting, and she got a standing ovation, which was extremely well-deserved, but I think we all believe in our school system and are very excited to recognize just one of the many fabulous teachers and administrators. Two more, the Superior Achiever of the Year, presented by Davis Financial and Insurance Group of Allstate, was awarded to the fabulous Mr. Jim Payne, that many of you have sat in the room with. Unfortunately, he's not here today in the back of the room, but he was recognized for the many years of service he has given, really, across the board, throughout the community and as well as a homeowner representing the HOA for Rock Creek. And lastly, but definitely not least, were the Volunteer of the Year Award, presented by Key Equipment Finance, and we awarded it to a husband and a wife team that many of you know very well, Mr. Wally and Karen Walagorsky. Their names were given to us by a few residents, and due to their, really, their continued impact with the historic commission, they have made an impact in this community. So, we are very excited to award that award to them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next is the consent agenda, and it does not look like we're spending money. So, we'll do, Mr. Regard wrote, motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Can I ask, here, it's in this packet, I didn't see the violations or lack of violations for Buffalo Wild Wings. There were none?
No.
Okay, good.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion by trustee Sorelli, second by trustee Guevaris. All those in favor? Pass is unanimous. All right, next is item number eight, discussion of an intergovernmental agreement with Louisville for the Superior Louisville Water Interconnect.
Start the, June 22nd at 10:00 a.m. is the ceremony for the Phase 1 US 36 improvements over at the First Bank Center. That's an event that I forgot to mention.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that.
So, the emergency interconnect, during the past two years, Superior and Louisville have been working together on an integration study that's been looking at the possibility of sharing water and wastewater resources and facilities owned by the city of Louisville and the town of Superior. On the water side, there appears to be a substantial benefit to both of our communities in moving forward with an emergency interconnect of the two water networks. This would be something that would typically be activated by either community only in an emergency if something were to happen to one of our water treatment plants serving, serving either community. It seems to work well. We both have a similar raw water delivery system. We utilize the community ditch, Marshall Lake, and Louisville Superior Pump Station, and the city of Louisville utilizes the same two delivery systems, along with the Louisville Pipeline, which delivers the South Boulder Creek water to either of the water treatment plants. Because we share raw water delivery systems, moving the water to either municipalities is not an issue, because both cities have storage facilities near their water treatment plants, ours being the reservoir just up the road. Water quality is similar. Superior and Louisville receive raw water from the same sources, which include those that I've just mentioned, including Colorado Big Thompson and Wind Gap Systems, which are conveyed from Carter Lake. The shared water sources for Superior and Louisville have similar, similar water quality, which would allow integration of their water systems with minimal potential of adverse impacts on treatment, storage, or distribution systems. We've provided an IGA that staff has drafted, and wanted to give the board some time tonight to discuss and comment, so we can give feedback to the city of Louisville and their council with any concerns that we might have in the IGA. Some highlights of the IGA. The costs of design and construction are shared 50/50 by both cities. Superior is the lead agency during the design phase, which is going on right now. Louisville will be the lead agency during construction, which will be later this year. The interconnect capacity will be 2 million gallons per day, which should be adequate for both communities. It'll be jointly owned by both communities. There's a 24-hour notice by either party prior to using the interconnect. This can be waived by-
If it's an emergency.
If it's an emergency, exactly. If it's a maintenance thing, then, you know, we require 24-hour notice. As I mentioned, to be used for emergency situations or to supplement water supplies needed. Water quality has to meet the requirements set by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. The agreement is effective until terminated by either party after 30-day notification. I know trustee Dozel has talked to me about this, and thinks 30 days is too short of a timeframe, and I would agree. I've talked to the city manager in Louisville, he agrees. I haven't talked to Alex, but I think you're probably in agreement that that probably needs to be lengthened. Our IGA for library services is, I think, there's a six-month or 12-month notification period in that, so we could do something similar to that.
I would do a minimum of 90 days, if not 180 days, really.
Right. Yeah. The rates that we would charge either Louisville or they would charge us would be $3 per 1,000 gallons, and there's a escalator in there for costs of, cost of inflation set by the Denver Metro rate, if we decide to do that. I think that's it. Alex is here, as well as Jim Wyner, who's our superintendent of utilities. If they, I don't know if you have anything to add, but feel free.
Yeah, Alex, our general public works director, you know, in terms of charging each other, we'd probably go back and forth with water, you know? If we have an emergency situation, we'd probably pay them back with water.
Right, yeah, that's another way that-
Yeah, that's another way we would do it. And we would have meters going each way, so we'd know how much water each of us would take.
Could one of you refresh us on why this even came forward? Why do we need this?
Well, this is an insurance policy in case anything happens at our water treatment plant or tank, that we have a backup system that can supply. I'll give you an example. When we, when we had the September floods, we didn't have a problem, but one of our water districts had lines that were severed by the creek, and they had interconnects with other jurisdictions, so they were able to, you know, get back up and operating, even though water line got taken out of place. So, you know, our treatment plant could catch on fire, our tank could blow, you know, some catastrophic event could occur, and if it does, we're kind of on our own. This gives us the capability of giving us 2 million gallons a day to serve something in case of a catastrophe.
Can you translate what that looks like, like 2 million gallons a day? What is that?
What do we serve now?
How many households are-
What lake is that?
Yeah.
No, that's us, that's what we use.
Yeah, about 2 million, we're producing about, a little over-
Yeah, 2 million on average.
On average, we produce about $2 million, 2 million gallons a day at our treatment plant.
Yeah, we use that much.
Is one day's?
It's one day's worth of water.
And we have, we have storage capacity as well in our tanks, but yeah, that's what-
And that was why it was important to us, because we didn't have any way to get water if we had a problem. They eventually, I had understood Louisville would also like to probably just purchase additional water from us, maybe, or treatment.
You know, down the road, this has the capability, if they want to use some of our excess water treatment capacity, we have the ability to provide them, you know, up to 2 million gallons a day, you know, that they would buy, but we could provide them without them having to expand their water plants. So, down the road, that could be, it could be used for that. So, this IGA doesn't cover that at this point.
Right, right. So, that's why I was going to ask, or maybe discuss, is that my understanding was this is the IGA to get in place the emergency use, but eventually, we would expect to replace this IGA with something that might also possibly include wastewater treatment facilities and/or them buying water from us to use.
Right, down the road, if they were going to buy water, and we, we would have to make some modifications to our water plant to supply them.
Right, right.
This is just emergency, and if it's major maintenance, say they want to take their water treatment plant down for a month for maintenance, we could supply, you know, fill that gap.
Right.
So, I think for that, those purposes. And then, if we wanted to do more, where we sell them water, so they don't have to expand their plant, we would come back with a different IGA for that.
Right. So, this one, when it's just for an emergency, I'm not so worried about the shortened time. It would be more like if they were buying water from us, and we had created some ability to provide them water on a regular basis, then we'd need a longer timeframe. So, this one, which is more, you know, I think 30 days seems a little light, but I don't know that we need to go six months or anything like that. And then, the other thing is that in figure one in your document here, you're showing all these pipes and all this kind of stuff. How many of those are new? Is there a lot of it that's new, or do we just, we don't really have to create too many?
Well, we're building a pipeline. Our system ends at 76th Street.
Okay.
So, we're building half a mile, 2,600 feet of water pipeline along Marshall Road-
Okay.
-to get to their, at a point where we can tap into their lines.
Okay.
And then, we're building valve systems to be able to make the connection.
Is that what-
So, not all of this on figure one is new?
Hmm?
Not all of this, these pipes on figure one in your, in our-
Right.
-packet is new?
That's right.
Okay. And is, are we talking about a lot of money here? We're saying we're covering 50%, but how much of that are we proposing that we might? I know this isn't finalized yet.
So, that was my question, too, what's the cost of the design?
We have about, it's about $900, $950,000 project, and so, we're splitting, and it's planned, we've just about got it designed, we're planning to go to construction in the fall.
Okay, all right.
So, trustee Sorelli?
Go ahead.
Well, no, the price, can you break it down, so that, how much was, is the design, and then how much is the construction? Do you know that, more or less?
Design was about $100,000, and-
About $100,000 for design.
And construction would be about $950, $900.
$950,000 for-
And we're splitting 50/50. All right. Joe?
So, that answers one of the questions I had. The other question I have is the rate of $3 per 1,000 gallons, where did that come from?
I think that's our current rate.
Yeah. For commercial.
Can I follow up on that? To simply have it inflation-adjusted is, makes me very uncomfortable, because we might have unique set of circumstances, like long-term drought in our region, that influences our price upward, more than just inflation, which I don't think what impact on water cost would have a huge impact on the unseasonably adjusted inflation rate. So, I am, so often, when you look at a contract that's been in place long-term, there is an inordinately low price point set, and it was set at that point because people didn't anticipate those impacts that affect that price. So, if we had a, had a huge drought in this area, let's say it persisted for several years, et cetera, does not the cost of this 1,000 gallons potentially could really increase, could it not?
You had discussions about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we were ever to get in a, because there's, I think, a clause in the IGA that stipulates, you know, the municipality supplies this water in an emergency situation, if capable.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if we don't have the water to supply, then we're not able to supply it to them. But I mean, as far as the rate goes, the thought there was, this is mainly going to be used for emergency situations, it's a fellow municipality, we don't want to charge them some-
Right, outrageous amount.
Outrageous rates, and the same, you know, for us, and, and so-
But I also don't want us to, let's say we're the supplying town, and we've got the availability, and we want to do it, I don't want us to be economically impacted by setting this price too low. So, I actually would like a clause here, you know, I'm happy to pass it on at our cost, but I'm not hap, or our cost plus a little handling fee or whatever is standard in the industry, but I don't want to ever be put in the position of having to hand it, to supply it, because we've got the available supplies, and we want to help out, but we've gotten ourselves into a contractual thing that makes us supply it at below our cost. So, I just want our rate and how it's set to make sure at any one point in time, let's say this is in place for 50, 100 years, that our cost is clearly the measure and not some flat rates set previous, 50 years previous.
So, you know, I would say a couple of things to consider. One is, as Alex mentioned, repayment may not be in funds, but in water.
Right.
You know, once, let's say our plant goes down in an emergency situation, we need to get water from the city of Louisville, and once our plant comes back up, we can replenish that water back to them.
Right.
So, that's something to consider. The other thing is, our rates are pretty similar in both municipalities, and I think if we get to a point, let's say in 10 years, and our rate's $6 a gallon or $5, and theirs is the same, then you amend the IGA at that time and say, hey-
Well, why don't we amend it now, and say the prevailing-
We look for, but it gets a little-
How about the prevailing rate?
But then, you're changing every year.
Well, you don't say the amount, you just say the prevailing rate, per $1,000.
But the rate could be 50 cents more than ours, or ours could be 15-
What about just the actual cost of the water at the time?
But there's tiered levels in each city. We have a tiered level, they have tiered levels.
We can have it set- We can have it set at $3 bucks.
It gets very complex, and so, in our discussion, we thought it would be simpler, just, just $3 per 1,000.
I think the issue is if inflation doesn't keep up with the price of water, I, that's.
That's what I'm saying, you amend the IGA.
Uh, I think we just, we need looser language here, because if the prevailing rate for 1,000 gallons in 25 years is $30, we look idiotic to have, have put $3 in at any point in time, so we need more forgiving language. And I'd like to see this come back with, with that more forgiving language, that the prevailing rate, the actual rate.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I saw a thing in Boulder where an interest rate got planted inside of an ordinance, you know, that made sense that day, but way down the line, it made no sense. And so, these things get stuck in these agreements, and I think they're, yeah, if we, if we could somehow get some.
Kendra, how would you verbalize, I mean, what Sandy's trying to say?
We could certainly talk about it, but I, I agree that I don't know that, the CPI may just not be the best index to use, there may be a different index, maybe there's a water index, and I understand, I don't want to overly complicate with formulas, but we could, I would think we could put in actual costs in the municipality providing the water, whatever that may be, on the day we provide the water. And I understand there's tiers, maybe, I, I don't know a lot about this, so I certainly would need to discuss it and determine what the appropriate formula is.
Right.
But my concern is the same concern that you have, which is that the price of water increased, or the cost, whatever we want to say, increases far faster than inflation, and it could.
Mm-hmm.
So, then we would be stuck, and especially with a longer termination period, we would be stuck providing water, or could be stuck. I think if we repay it in water, it doesn't matter, it's a wash. So, if we put something in here that we repay in water, it really doesn't matter.
Right.
But this protects both municipalities, it is just us. I mean, I think it would be in their best interest as well, you know.
But I, so, two things that came to mind when we were, one is, I don't think it says in there that we might repay it with water, does it? We should add that in there, if that's a possibility.
And maybe that's the solution, is just always repay with water.
The only problem is if you have a net user.
Right.
You never repay it in water, because let's say Louisville has on net, over history, a graver need than we do, so there's no mechanism for repaying.
This is the only, the emergency for equal sides. This is not for, where they want to buy water from us on an ongoing basis. Well, it didn't make a new IGA if that comes up. The other thing, though, is couldn't you put in there something that says that we review the price every, and stick a timeframe in there?
Sure, that's another option.
I think that would be better, say, every year, or every two years, or, you know, pick a date and time and say, we will review and adjust.
Accordingly.
Accordingly, at that time. So, you have a, you know, pick a time, I don't know, is it annual, or by, every two years?
Five years or 10 years.
Every five years, something. Pick a timeframe and just say, we'll review the price and make changes as appropriate at that time, based on costs.
I think some language should be added, though, about the repayment of water, and have that be the priority.
Right.
That's, that's the default, is always repay with water, and you don't even get into this pricing.
Right. Do you have to have a price in there?
But.
And the ability to change it at a certain regular timeframe.
We had, this is just a draft, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, it'll come back to us with some suggestions.
You have to go back to the city of Louisville.
So, I would actually like staff tomorrow to silver and come back to us with some suggestions. I don't think we have to come up with that.
Yeah, and see what they say as well, and, by the way, where does our half a million come from, the, our portion?
It comes from the Superior Metropolitan District Number 1 CIP Fund.
That was set aside?
Mm-hmm.
In anticipation of this, okay.
Yeah, it's in budget.
All right.
Um, getting to costs, that 11A, just put that in plain English for me, about if the buyer provides raw water to be treated and returned, the rate shall be 80% of the flat rate. So, to treat it is $2.40 per 1,000 gallons, to treat it and return it to its source.
Jim?
The 80% came from treating the water. That's what, on average, that's about what it costs to treat water from a raw state.
Right. And see, that's another reason why you can't have the flat rate of $3 in, because if treatment costs escalate beyond the rate of inflation, then you're in the same boat on that clause as we were on the other clause. So, I'd ask you to keep that in mind when you're playing around with new language.
Okay. Well, you just raise the overall rate, and then that raises the amount of money you get for treating it, too.
Right.
I mean, you'll never get to, well, there'll always be a difference between the cost of the raw water and the treatment of it.
Two.
Yeah. But if, if the total combined goes up, then you just have the ability to make that change at a regular timeframe, if needed.
I had a question about item number eight. It says, municipalities may agree in their sole discretion to sell water for purposes other than emergency or supplementary uses. I'm guessing we can do that now. I mean, each municipality can sell water now for any purpose. I'm just, I'm wondering why that sentence is in there, if it's, if it's something each municipality can do now, why does it get called out?
The, the IGA is being put together for mainly emergency purposes, but it, as Alex mentioned, if we need to do maintenance on our facility, or they need to put, shut down their facility for maintenance, then this just clarifies that it could be, it's just a clarification.
But sold to other, this sounds like to sell water for purposes other than emergency or supplementary supplies. I mean, that sounds like sell water to.
Each other.
That's to each other, that's what the intent is. That's the intent, is to make it sell to each other.
Clearfoot.
Yeah. We can look at that section and.
It just sounds like sell it to another municipality.
Boulder Valley.
To a farmer, or something like that. I, I don't have, I don't have a problem, but I just, I just, I'm wondering.
I will take a look at it and see if it needs to be clarified.
It needs to be confined within the parameters.
Right, it just, it seems a little out of place for.
Yeah.
The other question I have is about the interconnect pipe itself, and whether that's, so it's almost half mile long, does it have water in it when it's not in use? And if it does, it'll need to be flushed, and probably need to be flushed periodically. How's, how's all that?
Yeah, we, we're designing this with JVA, and we've had discussions about how we're gonna do that. We're still a little unsure, but we're thinking it's gonna be empty, and we're gonna have some flushing hydrants for it, so when we fill it, we can chlorinate it, and that would be quicker than flushing a line that's been sitting, say, say you didn't need it for 15 years, or, you know, an emergency never happened, then you've got some pretty, pretty bad water in there, and you might have to flush that and clean the pipeline, and then flush it again. So, if you just have an empty pipeline, you can, I think you can get to the emergency quicker. We're still sort of mulling that part over, but, yeah, that's being considered.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that'll be in that, there was an operations piece.
We're going to, to put together a, sort of a, um, operating procedure on how to handle the maintenance, and we're gonna have a checklist of what everybody's supposed to be doing and, and how to maintain it.
And is that a piece that the Department of Health is, do they have regulations?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It has to be, yeah.
That's their regulation, so make sure that that interconnect doesn't become a contamination point or something.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Other questions?
Okay. When will this come back to us?
We'll have to go back to the city of Louisville and their staff, and I think they still have to get it before their city council and get their comments, so it could be a couple months before.
And the design is almost done, you said?
Yeah, the design, we're closing out the design, and we're going to wait till the fall to get it out.
Okay. That's good. It's a good thing, overall.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, move on to item number nine, discussion of potential recreation sites.
Uh, this is a follow-up item, thanks guys. It's Alex's 40th wedding anniversary, and he's spending.
Oh, happy anniversary. Congratulations, all right.
Oh, happy anniversary. Congratulations to your wife, yeah.
Oh.
He's taking her to Mexico next week.
Oh, there you go.
Thanks. Uh, so, this is a follow-up item from the board's last retreat, where there was discussion of possible sites for a possible recreation center, and what made the most sense, and what, how much of a recreation space could be included on these potential sites. Three sites that we're looking at were the Town Center, and the up to 40,000 square feet or more, depending on, on what we could do with the developer, someplace in there doing an expansion or repurposing of this site, the Town Hall site, and how much space we could have there, and then the 15 acres that the town bought at the corner of Colton and McCaslin, and how much space we could potentially get there for a recreation center. So, the park staff, Patrick and his staff, worked, um, worked on this to give you the spreadsheet that was included in your packet, and basically, it analyzes all three sites and gives you a breakdown of the total square footage and type of amenities that you can see at all three sites. On the Town 15, or, that's what we're calling it, my staff at least, which is the 15 acres, this is the only site out of the three that you could get a full-size recreation center with an indoor pool and indoor gym. Um, and, and these are, the amenities that you saw in your packet are just your typical kind of core amenities you see in a recreation center. That's what we started with. There may be things that the board, if you start to go down this path, would want to add to a facility, but this is just for discussion purposes what we included. So, on this, you could get the full recreation center, full size, about 64,000 square feet is what, and include the indoor pool and indoor gym on that site. And you would be able to do it, you'd have land available even beyond that to do other things, whether we wanted to sell it for commercial, or residential, or do athletic fields on, or, we just have other options for the remaining portion of that site. Uh, on the Town Center site, um, we have the potential for up to 40,000 square feet of space. We did talk to representatives with the master developer about including an indoor pool and indoor gym in that location, and that's something that they said they wouldn't support, simply because they felt it would take away commercial and residential space, which would generate property tax, which is gonna be used to repay back the bonds. So, that was their position. So, in that, um, on that location, the types of amenities and size would be about 29,000 square feet, including, um, weight, fitness room, aerobic dance room, teen studio game room, digital library, community room, adult lounge, classrooms, childcare, were the core for that location. Uh, and the Town Hall location, which is the third site, we have about a little more than one acres to the west of this building, which we looked at and thought could get 10, just over 10,000 square feet of space on, and this would include weight and fitness, aerobic, teen area, digital or, digital library or flex space, adult lounge, classroom, childcare were the components of this. Now, that, this, what's in your packet did not include repurposing this part of the building. So, the board thought, this is a good location, we want to repurpose this, you could add another 5,000 square foot of space, for a total of just over 15,000.
Say that again.
So, the.
Then include this space.
The 10,000 square feet was just on the land to the west, and so, this would stay as it is, but if you wanted to repurpose this space, you could add another 5,000 square feet.
Which means you'd have to move this function.
Right, this would have to move someplace else.
Yeah.
And I don't know why this was even an option, I just think it's, I'm sorry, it's ridiculous, that I can't ever see reg, being right here or back there. It doesn't make any sense at all to me. Obviously, the first option is an abundance of space, great location, geographically speaking. Um, the Town Center has some limitations, I didn't realize that the, the developers had some pushback in terms of the pool, so that kind of disappoints me, but, I mean, I guess I understand where they're coming from. But Town 15, to, to me, has always been a great, great place, great location. We can have everything there, basically.
And Patrick's here tonight as well, I think there's some members of ProSTAC here as well.
Okay. Do you have any more of your presentation?
No, just, um, we, uh, have the information that was included, basically, just a breakdown of the square footage and locations that was in your packet, so.
Okay. Do we want to give opportunity to members of the public, or ProSTAC, or whoever, to comment, and then we can?
Yeah, Patrick, did you have anything to add to that?
I like when you feel strongly.
Patrick, I'm in town, so, the only, um, point to add is the information in the spreadsheet came from a previous study with Greenplay and Barker-Inker CCAT. And then the, the items listed in the facilities were consistent with items identified in the survey as well. So, the square footage, we did our best to match the highest priority identified in the indoor survey, indoor space survey with the, the square footage available as part of an extension of a, a previous study that had began in 2013.
Okay.
Patrick, I would like to ask you a couple questions. Would you clarify the first two lines and how they differ from each other? Use the Town 15 property spreadsheet. Required building support services and facility administrative spaces. What are those?
The required building support spaces would be, um, things like HVAC system boilers, um, your, your more infrastructure of the building, and then the facility admin support spaces would be office spaces, check-in areas. The building support spaces would also factor in things like storage rooms.
So, obviously, if you're on facility administration spaces, you're, you're, you're coming up with some sort of working number of how many staff it would take to operate this facility, so can you share that with us?
Um, we actually, in the part of that BRS study, we didn't quite carry it on to making the assumption about the number of staff. We were trying to just get a general feel of, of, almost a placeholder, making sure it was in there. It's something that tends to get overlooked, is storage and staffing areas, but we didn't actually carry it out to, to do the staffing component of it at this time.
So, go down to that estimated operating maintenance cost of $1.5 million.
Mm-hmm.
So, that includes staff in there, right?
That does require your baseline staff, which would be a, a person checking in at the front desk, some kind of building supervisor, but it didn't factor in numbers of, of open hours and things like that, or your programmatic staff, so it wouldn't factor in a, you know, a swim lesson coordinator or youth sports coordinator.
Life guards.
Life guards. Um, I was, the, on the Town 15 property, that number does factor in lifeguards, but the, the more programmatic stuff, it did not.
What comes to mind is that tour we took, um, they always outgrew their staff space in, you know, just across the board, they had a problem with not having allocated enough staff space. And then they had a, I can't remember, on a, you may have a sort of a working number from your contacts in the industry, for a 65,000 square foot facility, about roughly how many staff do other entities have? Do you have any idea?
Um, the only one that I can reference that, that we visited was, the 65 is about the size of Erie.
Erie, right.
And they referenced that they were somewhere near 30 staff, that included the, the program staff as well, and janitors and maintenance.
Okay. And then, last question on this, on the Town 15 spreadsheet, it does not include the digital library. Is there a reason for that, that that wouldn't be in that same facility?
The, I, um, I think the, the thought there is, um, with the community space, we can, are able to have in the, at the Town Center, that that's, that would be a location for it.
It'd be at the Town Center.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, are you saying that if we did the Town 15, you'd still do the same amount in the Town Center?
No, no.
No, no, but you put the library in the Town Center.
But, I mean, that's one of the uses, I think, that would make sense in the, in the, in the Town Center.
So, we still have civic space there, right? We have space.
Well, we, yeah, yeah. I don't know if we, if we would have, you, you don't have to have it over there, we can choose not to, if we build something this big in some other property, but, you know, this is all just getting an idea of how big this guy is, you know, not necessarily what we're gonna do, but how big it is.
Right.
Um, yeah.
But that brings up, obviously, the question, or the, whatever we choose in one But that brings up, obviously, the question, or the, whatever we choose in one place, there's going to be additional costs somewhere else to do other things that we're not doing in the one place. So the whole budget, potentially, like if you did the town 15 property in the civic, in the town square, you could be talking 25 million construction cost altogether, yeah, just for different uses in the, in the town center.
And how much of this number is available through our civic space or of the 10 million of this? So the 6 million that's been identified as a pie in the sky estimate for the town center, how much of that is covered by the 10 million? What portion of that is covered by the 10 million for civic space?
For the civic space?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that was for, I mean, what's listed in that exhibit is 6 million.
Right.
Yeah.
I know what's, but how much of that 6 million is covered out of the 10 million that's available for civic space?
I'm not following your question.
Well, you have $10 million been identified for civic space within the Superior Town Center.
Right.
And some portion of that is to be used to create civic space.
Cost-sharing agreement.
Which could include some of these items that are listed here.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So how much of this 6.4 million dollars that's been a big estimate of possibility would be covered by some portion of the 10 million dollars?
6 million. Well, I mean, it's, it's, what's listed in the exhibit is 6 million.
Okay, so you're saying that all of this 6 million could potentially be covered by 6 million out of the 10 of the civic space amount?
Correct, yep.
But none of the town 15 property is covered by any of that money?
Right, right.
So theoretically, we're not adding the two together to come up with a total amount that comes out of our pockets as residents, but, you know, that's something to keep in mind, too.
Something to consider for sure.
Right. So if we're going to be able to get a lot of what we might need and want and can afford out of the town center and out of the civic space budget, that might be what we need to think about.
Let's do an option for public comment, and then we'll continue our discussion. Any public comment?
Peter Bottomley, ProStac Chair. But ProStac hasn't seen this or discussed it, so I just remind you that, you know, we made our motion at the April ProStac meeting to ask the board for direction on indoor space, so, you know, from this, maybe you could come up with that so that we could plan out the rest of our year regarding this issue. But just personally, my thoughts would be similar to what Rita is saying, is that maybe you look at the town center as more of your community space, take out that weight fitness room, and just do your community space in there and use your 6 million from the TIF. And then, any kind of grander idea of recreation amenities, you know, that's what, you know, do some further review as to whether or not that's something that would happen at town 15, because most likely that would require some type of ballot issue to fund. So this is my thought.
Okay, thank you. Additional public comment? Okay.
Well, the, we can give this as much urgency as we want to give it or don't want to give it. But the reason this came up at the retreat and the reason it came up in ProStac was if we dared to shoot for November 2016 ballot issue, it needs urgency in terms of a lot of stuff. One, coming up with a, we took that as a Barker Rinker CCAT, we took that BRS study only so far, and then we stopped, which means we've never, and that was pre, pre-survey, right? So now we've got survey and we've got some help from Barker, BRS, and, but what I'm trying to say is, you need a plan to show the community as to what this would look and feel like, and we're a long way away from that. And we may choose to say, we aren't going to be where we need to be by 2016, and we can take a lot of pressure off ourselves, right? If we don't feel we can be there. Or that the political climate with escalating property taxes and whatnot is too uncertain. We can take that off, or we can't impose it. So that is really the reason why this has, is in front of us today.
Do you feel like the ballots would say, name a specific place?
I do. I think it needs to-
So we have to make that decision ahead of time?
Well, I think the purpose of tonight is to start narrowing down choices. We're not making any choices tonight, but we're starting to narrow down.
But understand that by this time next year-
Oh, for sure.
We've got to have it in front of us, and the community, in my opinion, yes, in my opinion, we have had a lot of iffy initiatives that have gone before the voters on this, and to me, for any chance of success, you will have picked out a location and you will have picked out, you will have in front of the voters what it's going to look like and what it's going to contain, and what it's not going to contain and cost, and you will have as much definitiveness as you possibly can. And we have one short year, really, to accomplish that, because then you have to start getting the ballot language, you've got to, you know, this time next year, it's got to be final, what you're going to go. So we may choose to abandon that and say, we're not, we have had some of these discussions, one, by two years into the town center, we expect there to be physical properties on the town center, and that hasn't been the case, so.
My thoughts are, we should not abandon it, actually, and we should try to push forward. One way to narrow it down is to eliminate option number three tonight, because that's just a ridiculous option. You know, the other two have both pluses and minuses, so, and I agree with Rita, I think we need to seriously consider, you know, it's very, very different officers, but I think they both have their merits. You know, the town center and 6 and 1/2 million versus the whole thing of town 15, so.
So I'm kind of concerned about rising taxes or the reaction to rising taxes that everyone's going to face in this upcoming year. And, you know, and you look at, just say, we eliminate this space here, and we look at what's presented for the town center and the town 15 property, and of course, those numbers include a lot of duplication, same things in both places, except what can't be in the town center. So my thought is, we focus on the town center of what is a really good community center that we can do within this wherewithal here, with the idea of sometime more than two years out. The rec, what's left for like indoor pools and indoor track and maybe a gym for rec center, that's not going to be duplicating, that's already in the community center for meeting rooms and things like that, that will be covered in the town center. That's just a thought. The one regret I have is, I've heard the lament recently, and I think many would agree, we don't have a place for teens to go to in town, and to the extent the town center might fix that, that's great, but, you know, obviously, the rec center would be the real best fix for that. But I'm really struggling to see a tax initiative passed in the next two years when the sticker shock of this upcoming year comes up.
And the advantage of the town 15 is that you have everything under one roof.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if you want to swim, you swim, you want a track, you want a lift weights, you want a, you have all of it.
But, but do you need a senior adult lounge there and a senior adult lounge in the town center?
No, no, you don't, no, no.
And a community room in both places, that kind of thing?
No, you don't.
And then the library could be here and not there, and so that could lower the cost and price maybe there some, maybe not a great deal, but, I mean, that's just figuring out what, what we don't want, what we're not going to need to duplicate and what we're going to want in the town center regardless.
When we toured the rec centers with Patrick, everybody said that an indoor pool is almost like a must in the community, and so we have to consider, and obviously, that's not going to happen here.
Along those lines, I want to keep the thought on the table of the fact that we've got two pools already in this town that are great pools. Our north pool does need some updating.
It does.
But I think it's a great candidate for a roof. I've said it, I've said that before, and I, I agree, if we, if we won the lottery and we had unlimited funds, the town 15 rec center sounds great. Let's build it, let's do it. But if, if money is an issue, and it usually is, let's, let's do things strategically about what can we, what can we do? We've already got a lot of great amenities here. I hesitate to put weight room in, in the town center in our 40,000 feet, because we've just heard that Impact is going to build a weight room in the area that they were going to, you know, they were in discussions with us about, namely. So I hesitate to do anything weight-related over there, because that's going to be a duplication, and I don't think-
So that can fill up more space to do other things.
I think, I think we absolutely need the community center, the digital library, the teen center, the senior center, things that bring people in and things that people can interact with absolutely in our, in our community space in town center, but weight room, I'm not sure. I'm not sure about any real exercise facility over there, because I think that there's going to be a lot of amenities in that Boulder Valley Ice building that are going to fill a lot of needs. The question is, do we have the support to build this big, giant facility?
I understand.
Well, not even the support, but do we have the wherewithal to do it?
Yes.
You know, the ability to do it, the financial, the size. We're small, we're a small town, so, you know, and it's, when you're talking 20 million dollars, and it's not going to be-
A million and a half, maybe.
It's not going to be a million and a half, it'll be two and a half, three and a half million dollars a year, you know, by the time you get all the people and all that kind of stuff in there. That's a lot of bucks coming out. And I, I go back to, I'm not saying not do it, but let's do it strategically, like you said. Let's think about it, and we don't yet know what we're going to put in the town center, and we've said we want to put something there. So let's figure that out first. Let's do this in steps. Instead of trying to do two things and not sure what we're going to have in one versus the other, let's start with the one we know and do that, and we already know we have, if not all the money, the majority of the money available to build that out. I'm talking about the town center, civic space. So let's start with that, really make that a premier facility for use of the majority of the town residents, and then work toward something else. But I am with you about the pools, too, is I'd love to see a pool indoor for a small number, percentage of our population that would like to have that, but maybe we need to be creative and look, like you said, any, you, this, your current mayor, Clint, and our previous mayor, I think, talked about the bubble over top, and that's very doable to do that.
Maybe we should be looking at the feasibility of that and the cost.
Yeah, right, right.
I think it's been looked at, but it went, you know, one of the discussions I've had with staff is that you, you know, do you spend the money on a bubble because you've, you really need a whole facility overhaul? So do you spend that money only to, a few years later, be faced with, well, we really should have just overhauled the whole thing?
Questions, that answers no.
You know, you've got, you've got tennis courts there that, I think tennis courts are fairly portable around the community, so you've got more space there. I mean, maybe that whole facility, the, the pool could be expanded into a bigger pool facility, the built, the service building that services the pool could be expanded, and it really could become a year-round facility. We've got the land, it's there, and a lot of the, I don't know, maybe a lot of the infrastructure would all have to be replaced in a scenario like that, but.
I'd like to look at those options.
You could put tennis courts somewhere else.
I think, I think we could potentially put tennis courts in.
Like town 15?
Well, I don't know about that.
Well, you're not saying to move it, you're just saying to use that space that's there, that, a possibility.
Potentially. I don't know how much more space would be, maybe, maybe the exact footprint makes sense, but I think if you've got a, when you, when you've got tournaments going on there, you've got competitions going on, it's completely packed, and, I mean, you could, and that's fine, because they're fairly short durations, they're not every weekend, and that sort of thing, but-
But if you had a year-round?
If you had a year-round, it would put some, it would put a little more stress on the neighbors, like myself.
Right. I'd rather be looking at the options like that, rather than a complete mammoth rec center.
I think it's-
Yeah, I think that we should pick and choose and be more strategic about what we're trying to build out, and I don't, I don't, I'm not, wouldn't be in favor of trying to push something through into a ballot issue for next year, because we don't even have, like you said, the town center done yet.
Choice number two, that the town square, we don't have to go to ballot for that. That's right.
No, we just work with the master developer.
So that's one of the advantages.
All right.
For those of us who live through 2013 and every Monday night meeting in the summer and all that kind of stuff, if you go back to what it was we were trying to achieve, which is a thriving downtown for the town of Superior, and you ask yourself, what if the town doesn't do some sort of facility that pulls in traffic? Will we have an impact? And I think we will. I'm not prepared to, to pull out of the town center a significant civic gathering space. So, that being said, it's what is there that would be thriving? I do not want empty meeting rooms, I don't want an empty banquet room that's used once a month or once every weekend or something like that. So the question is, what can be there that's thriving? And we know any sort of library amenity will be used. What sort of emerged on the very last stop at that Boulder East was this idea of jointly using, having a large enough space that jointly is used by seniors and teens, seniors, you know, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, teens later, and frankly, that multi-generational aspect of maybe doing some things together, because you both co-own the space, is to me really exciting, you know? So that, to me, would be really used. And then, you know, the, you can, you can reasonably put in other amenities there that actually draw people there day in and day out, and that's the type of, of nature I want to, to a civic, town-sponsored amenity in town square, you know, above town square.
We've heard about how much that fire station, community room is used, we've used it, everybody used that. They tell us it's booked every day. So I think if we have a comparable space in town center, it'll be booked.
Well, or a divisible space-
Absolutely, something that can be repurposed.
That can, you know, by the time this is up, Heather's group's going to be 250 or 300, and a divisible space that can be used set in small spaces and then can be, remember those dancing couples at that one place, was at Boulder East? Where he can have a wedding reception, you know, or a big gathering, to me, is really something to, to think about.
You mentioned, you know, maybe taking out the weight fitness room, that's another 4,500 square feet that we could use, that's, you know, if we don't have the weights there.
That would be the only, that would be the only thing-
That leaves out a lot more space to have, I mean, the senior adult lounge and the whole silver sneakers, the demand is going to continue to grow. No, it is. Everybody said that.
I'm here to talk, you're right.
So, so we may want to have more than the 1,800 square feet. I know we're not solving this tonight, I'm just thinking outside, though, maybe instead of 1,800 square feet, we have 3,600 square feet for the seniors, right? To accommodate them.
When I talk about not including things, that's about the only thing that I would say not to include.
Right, and I look at this list, I agree.
Everything else on that list-
But we can rededicate that 4,500 square feet to some of the other amenities.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I think, I would like to see somebody actually work on something that's designed to meet the town of Superior's needs, not based on some other survey or somebody else's facility. I'd like to have that work started, and I don't know if, you know, if maybe that's what Peter's talking about for ProStac to work on, but the direction I think we need to give is, okay, somebody give me a vision, you know, that I can look at, that what, what we might, how we might purpose the space in the- what, what, what we might, how we might purpose the space in the town center.
If you're in the town center, we've provided you the space, planning, diagrams, something, are you talking about something like that or something different?
Well, I'm talking about getting the spirit of how it's going to be used. Not so much, okay, we have a weight room would be 44, 53 square feet, and this is this. I want to first get the idea, just like when the art committee was talking to us, what does Superior want to be from an art perspective, and where are we going? And that's kind of like this. How would we purpose this space? What are we going to use it for? And then that will tell us how big it should be and how much we're going to need of different spaces. I think first we want to say, okay, what would it look like? A vibrant gathering place look like? And, and that's really designing, you know, when they, when anybody comes and says, what did you, what do you want to, how do you want to use your house? You know, when, when they're designing your house for you, how do you want to use it? What do you see happening there? And I think maybe we should start there. Instead of going to the square footage numbers, let's talk about how would we use it? How would we, you know, what, what would we use it for? What kind of events would take place there? And then go back and, when I say events, I don't mean just like a wedding or anything. I'm talking about, how would you really use the space?
I get it.
What's the square footage of this place right here, just out of?
5,000.
5,000 square.
So the digital library is like half of this, this whole thing, right? 2,500 according to this?
It's going to probably take-
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right, the figure that it was used, but I mean, could you-
Well, you-
Larger, smaller?
And don't get hung up on how much a digital library yesterday used, how much space it is. Because even like the, what was that one library that passed around at the retreat? I can't remember which town it's in, but they even have, the, the, the youth come in and run to the coffee shop, and they have all kinds of spaces. And you have, I mean, it's not like this is a digital library, this is the dance room, this is the this room. It's, how do you use the space? I don't know if I'm articulating it well, but let's not think about how big we need for a given thing. Let's say, what would we use it for? How would we have it flow together? Because we don't need different rooms. We don't need different rooms.
I totally agree with where you're going. And I don't want to fit this next step into same old processes we fit it in. I really think we have a number of entities, the board for one, Prostag for another. We have an engaged citizenry on this subject. And what kind of facilitated process can, can we begin, you know, assertively? And who should lead that process? I keep hearing BRS mentioned, and I certainly would want to entertain them and know their, their expertise. They seem to come, have all the professional collective expertise that you're, you're bringing up. But the next step and this facilitated process of coming up with what spaces would look and feel like, I think is very important. And so I, I sort of guess I throw that out there at staff. You have a, a lot more expertise in this. But how do we move on very creatively into this next stage? I agree, if, if, am I interpreting correctly, that 2016 seems to be too quick for anything regarding a ballot initiative?
We need to have everything done by March or April of next, I mean, done, ready for ballot language. And, and I wouldn't feel comfortable having that discussion before we knew what we were going to put in the town center.
I have one bottom line, and that is the dance room has to have mirrors and bars.
Oh, you're a ballet.
Yeah, so they can see what I'm doing.
I'd actually, we have both the chairman and vice chairman of Prostag here. So they've now heard us churn this over. I'd actually like to hear back from you guys about what you've just heard up here. Does it make your skin crawl, or?
Maybe let's not put them on the spot.
Yeah, I wouldn't put them on the spot. They're both there.
What I, while they're thinking about that.
If you're willing, I'd like to hear from you.
I think that also do a little bit more research. And I, I can give you some things that I've found, Patrick, that, that show some, you know, futuristic kind of uses of space that's different than the traditional spaces that you maybe all, all have toured already. And I think we should just find some of the out-there kind of new looks and feels of civics.
Do you feel like you have a direction from the board overall? Yes?
Yeah, if you can send those to you.
I'll send those to you, yeah. And if anybody finds any others, find things that look kind of new and creative use of spaces. Because we don't want to, I don't want to walk into something that looks like a typical town.
It's got to be exciting.
Yeah, 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 right.
So the-
It's hard to grasp.
So the Town 15 option, I, I don't know that we totally take that off the top forever. It's just, it's more of we're putting it, we're, we're kind of putting it aside.
We have to think more about it.
We have to do some more work on it before that, yes. Okay. What, what is the board's general feeling towards this pool idea?
I like it. I mean, we can do it.
That we discussed.
I'm nervous about the idea because it's plopped right into a residential area. I am very concerned that if we make-
Like the visual appeal, you mean of a-
Well, and the impact on that, that community, that residential community. I'm, I do believe it's going to entail a lot more space. And it's going to entail bricks and mortar, not a bubble. And I'm concerned that by the time you refurbish the outdoor into the indoor, add the bricks and mortar, add the additional parking, that all this in part with year-round use, that you may not save any money over some other options elsewhere in town.
Where?
Oh, I think, well, one, you can subdivide that Richmond 15. You don't have to use that whole space for anything. We talked at the Louisville dinner, or sometime we mentioned to Louisville about some joint swimming-
Right, right.
Aquatics facility.
Right.
I think you raised that again, is there a, a nice piece of land that's centrally located that serves both communities? You know, that maybe we can both get behind and share the costs and all that kind of stuff on. But that, that bubbly, that bubble thing with a bigger facility in a residential community sort of carries some-
I think the bubble image, I, I think if you did it right, you would do something where it's a retractable roof, where it could be an outdoor pool in the summertime, and it could be an indoor pool in the wintertime.
But you, you just doubled the cost with that retractable roof idea. It's a lovely idea.
Well, with our winds, it can be retractable a lot many days.
Well, one of the things I've noticed about the north pool during the school year is that its parking lot gets used quite a bit by the school.
That's true.
Right.
And so if you had a facility operating all school year, there would be a real summer conflict.
And aquatic center, you could take the aquatic center to Town 15, right? That's strictly an aquatic center. And then you do the rest of it, like we talked about, right across, like option B here.
Well, I, I think we should just ask to have just, not a lot of research and analysis, but just do a little bit, what would it take just to put something over what's there? What would it take to expand it and do, you know, I mean, we can do different scenarios, different levels of-
I think it'd be just as much as putting something brand new over there.
But I'm not sure Richmond 15 would be the home for it if we're going to try to collaboratively do it with Louisville. Because the problem with our use of the library is that it's clear the heck away, right? So, wouldn't it be much nicer that library were like right across 36 where Outback is?
Or even if you put the aquatic center right up against the divergent diamond, you're going to put-
But I don't know. You know, I guess I'm not even aware of available parcels that time.
But we do own that parcel, that's the thing.
Yeah, yeah, I know we own that.
It's a great location.
But I don't think Louisville would be willing to collaborate.
It's a good location for Monarch High School, and it's-
No, it's a great location.
Richmond 15 is a good location.
Yeah, I guess not close it is for them.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't know.
Well, there's a lot of unknowns. I think we just ask some more questions. Because we, except we do know that I don't think we can go forward for a full-blown rec center with a pool anytime within the next year. I think we need to continue to consider things, but I don't think we're ready to go forward with the proposal.
I think we can consider an aquatic place, not a full rec center.
Right. And, and then definitely talk again with Louisville about that because-
But that, at the end of the day, that's going to be determined by a vote by both communities. I mean, that's a both-community vote. So that's almost, to me, that's almost a bigger nut to crack than this rec center in our own community. You've got two communities now that have got to vote for something.
An aquatic center wouldn't be voted by them. It'll be-
Yeah, if we wanted them to join into it, yeah. Okay.
So, again, it, to me, that, to me, it just seems more, it, it seems less complicated to, to do some improvements on an existing facility. I don't know that we need to make it a, a gigantic facility of the scale that would require, you know, that much more parking and things. Maybe we just, we scale it back, but we do improve it.
I think-
Do it in year-round use.
I hear that there's interest that we, I mean, I have an interest to do a little bit more research on that, to understand-
Right.
If it's even possible, kind of, you know, broad brushstrokes, what would it, what are we talking about?
The north pool site.
The north pool site, right. Just do some, you know, nothing extraordinary yet, but just an idea, is it even possible?
Yeah.
From a cost and a, and a feasibility, a feasibility kind of study.
I'm totally behind that. I'm totally behind doing an analysis of it. And I would like the analysis to include enough interior, non-pool space to be practicable. Because you need, you can't just walk in a building, have the pool there, right? Now you're going to have, you're going to have locker rooms, you're going to have to have gathering spaces, the team, you know?
Yes.
You know all that.
Right.
So, you sort of got my interest when you talked about the tennis courts. We can put the tennis courts elsewhere pretty easily, you know, and use that land. So I think it's definitely meritorious to consider further.
And we have grass there where we always put up grandstands on the Fourth of July. I mean, there is, there is land there. It's not impossible.
There really, there really is.
Yeah. It's not an impossible thought. It's feasible. Okay?
Okay.
I'm in. Everybody in the pool. If I, if I could whistle, I'd do it.
If I'd like to make any comments. Okay. We have a taker. Comments?
Good thing you came up here, Peter, to the meeting.
I don't mind being put on the spot, so. Peter Bottomley, Prostag Chair. Again, this is really just me speaking, not on behalf of Prostag. My, my two cents would be that although I understand what trustee Dozel is saying about understanding what goes in the town center before you really look at a full rec center, what, you know, when, what Prostag was asking, when we were asking about direction on indoor space, was not for you to commit today or even tomorrow to a ballot initiative next year, was do you want to do some of that legwork? Do some of that research to determine, you know, what would go there and whether or not it would get some support? I, I feel like you, that the board might be pushing that aside too easily. I think you want to do some research and determine whether, maybe, maybe out of that research you decide you don't want to pursue it at all any further. Or, or maybe you decide it's a better issue for 2018. But, you know, if you even remotely think it's something for 2016, now is the time to tackle it. You don't want to, you can't come back six months and say, oh, we made a mistake. We do want to do it for 2016 because then it's definitely too late. So if you, if you're really looking at, and maybe that rec center is, like you're saying, just an aquatic center. Maybe that's part of what comes out of that, that exercise. But I think in, in that regard, from the sounds of what you're talking about, what's going to go in town center would really be community. So then, the, what would go, you know, at the 15, Richmond 15 would be rec amenities. They're separate. So even though you still need to figure out what's going to go in town center, you pretty much know you're not going to put a pool, you're not going to put a weight room, you're not going to put a track, you're not going to put all the other stuff that might go at Richmond 15. So I would just, you know, ask the board to maybe think about, you know, maybe not tonight, but over the next couple of weeks, about whether or not you do want to give, you know, a little bit more research before you just kick that ballot initiative issue aside. And then my two cents on the pool, north pool, I think that, yeah, your dollar amount might be less. You know, say it costs you $5 million rather than a $20 million rec center. But what do you get out of that? A covered competitive pool? I mean, the value of what you might get out of doing the north pool, you know, covered north pool is not the same value you would get out of a full rec center. They're really not the same thing. So I would, you know, the board or the staff looked at it and basically decided it wasn't feasible. So, you know, you might be treading water, looking at that again, because it has been looked at. I mean, make the aside not to do the feasibility study and, yeah.
From my perspective, if it would cost $5 million, there's no way I think it would be a feasible idea to do something that that magnitude to just cover an existing pool that's there. So, I mean, I know you just threw that number out. Yeah, yeah. But I'm, I'm just saying that we wouldn't, I would never go forward with anything that came up with that.
That's not a figure to cover it. I mean, that would be, I think that's a figure to totally redevelop the site. And you, you got to remember, I mean, that's a 20-year-old developer-installed pool that it's, it's coming up on time to do something-
Right.
With it anyway.
Right. And I, and I agree, I, I always like to work from facts and data. At least, you know, some kind of analysis, data to use for analysis. And just saying what we'd like to have or what we think we might want to have. So I would like to see the numbers. I've never seen any numbers on that, so I would like to see the numbers.
On what?
On, on this, those to cover the pool, the feasibility, the feasibility again. And if you've done it, okay, drag them out, let's look at them again, maybe.
But also what it would cost for an aquatic center is that it's a standalone aquatic center, not just a cover pool that you compete, you go back and forth. I mean, to me, I have a vision, so-
At that site?
No.
The other side, by itself, you know, different site. So it's a different-
And what Peter said really has merit in that, or what I think Clint, all of it had merit, but whoever said the business about 20-year-old facility, so we have to be realistic. What are we going to have to put into this anyway over the course of the next decade to continue to have an outdoor pool?
Right. That's part of the feasibility study. What's, you know, the trade-offs, what's over here and what's over there?
Also, Matt, you said we're going to have time at a work session next meeting? When were we sort of short on things for work sessions?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean-
Let me tell you where I'm going with it. Deb and Chris are not here. And they have very strong opinions on, on this. I'd like to hear them. You know, I'd like to give them an opportunity to be here and weigh in on some of this, too, before we're signed, sealed, and delivered. So if that would be possible at the next work session?
I wouldn't be here at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, what about just an agenda item for next meeting? Because we're, the work session, I think, is full. We've got, that's full.
It could be, I'd like them to be able to watch this and to weigh in.
Yeah, I think we're pretty light on the regular meeting portion. We could potentially have 30 minutes.
We could continue the discussion if you'd like, yeah.
Right.
I think that's, I think that's fair. They do have very good opinions on this.
I think that, that is a good, and I know Deb, and I talked about it just briefly because she, I told her to make sure she looked at this before she left, you know, and if she had an opinion. But one of the things that I think that we need to keep in mind as we talk about a potential for a rec center in town, you know, we talk about what we want to put in rec centers, but we really need to kind of start with, can we really afford it? I mean, we're talking 20 million to 25 million dollars. And so we really need to kind of start there, too. Can we, as a town, in Superior support a $20 million rec center? And I don't know, I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just saying, I think we need to start there.
Well, do you have 51% of people in Superior that will support you?
Will pay-
Yes.
The huge amount of money on their taxes extra.
Yes.
And, and, and you won't probably have even 50% of the residents utilizing the rec center. So-
Yeah, but you've got to have them to-
You've got to have them vote and say they'll pay even if they're not going to use it. And I think we need to start there to, let's be real- And I think we need to start there, to let's be realistic about whether or not we think we can, as our size of our town and already our high taxes and the fact that taxes are growing up like Joe was saying, we need to start with, do we really think it's feasible for us to consider a 20, $25 million rec center for the size that we are?
With a minimum of 1.6 operating.
Well, you're going to have to double that.
We can provide you, yeah, with the information that we had at the retreat, had some financial information in there.
Right.
So we can give that to you again.
Let's, let's have that as the starting point of discussion, this is what it's going to cost every single household in Superior if we did something like this. And then talk about if that's feasible enough.
That was in that retreat material, but it'd be good to see that again.
Yeah, let's see that when we have the next discussion.
Okay.
But an aquatic center, if it was a standalone, would go to ballot for that too or not necessarily?
Yeah.
You would?
If you have to pay for it with taxes.
Yeah, because you would need to have either a property or sales tax or combination.
We don't have the budget.
Yeah.
Right.
We don't have the budget capacity for it as is.
We own the land.
Well, but not necessarily, we haven't deemed what we're going to use or what we're going to do. We own the land, but it could be, we're multiple of uses.
Yeah, I'm not thinking about an aquatic center that covers 15 acres, but it could be a portion of that, obviously.
Six pools, diving in your facility.
So my staff and probably Pro-Stack won't be, we won't do anything until the next meeting and then we'll have the continued discussion and see what direction we get after that.
Good, good.
We do know though that Pro-Stack, well, I don't know, we'll wait till the next discussion. I'm talking about the Town Center, I'd still like to get started, I'd like to have somebody get started on, what would the Town Center facility look like? Are we going to wait till after our next discussion?
I think it's wrapped into everything.
Okay, that's fine, I'm okay with that.
Okay, anything further? Meeting adjourned.